Thank you, please be seated. Evening everybody, can I take this opportunity to wish you all a Happy New Year and hope everybody had a nice break? Apologies for absence.
Thank you Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Beecham, Bell, Corbett, Denham, Greenhoff, Heindmarsh, Kilgawa, Lower, O'Brien, Roman, Jackie Robinson, Karen Robinson, Sharon Patterson, Philipson and Walker.
Thank you very much. Minutes of the last meeting, do council agree the minutes of the meeting held on the 1st of November 2017? Agreed? Any matters arising? No? Thank you. I have a few official announcements. First of all, on behalf of the council, I would like to congratulate all those with a connection to Newcastle who have been recognised in the New Year's honours list. Second one, as colleagues will know, February 6th 2018 is the centenary of the Representation of the People Act, which gave some women, those over 30, who were rich, owned land and married, the vote for the first time. We've moved on a bit, thank heavens. In Newcastle, a group of women from a range of organisations have been working together to plan a series of events on women's suffrage to mark this important legislation. More information will be circulated, but can I urge you all to be part of the celebration events which will run from the 6th of February to the 8th of March. A couple of examples include a 5K walk or run, supported by Active Newcastle through the This Girl Can team on International Women's Day, and a workshop for children to be held in the library in half-term. We intend to produce a brief programme so colleagues will receive that soon. And can I just urge everyone to take part in that? It was a great event and without it we wouldn't be here today. I now have some information from Members' Diary. A Constitutional Committee has discussed a proposal to bring forward the date of the July Meeting of Council to a week earlier, to Wednesday 27th of June 2018, and that for future years, the July Meeting is moved to the last Wednesday in June. Confirmation of the dates and the deadlines will be circulated in the next few days. I need to ask if council agrees with that amendment? Agreed? Thank you. And finally tonight, as you are all away, tonight City Council will determine the council tax base, and I would like to remind Members that the guillotine will fall at 9pm rather than 8.30pm. And I think if we use this time wisely, we may actually get through all the business, which would be great and it would save carrying stuff forward to the next one. So let's all try to do that. Correspondence. Does council agree to receive the letters from the Treasury, the Department of Communities and the local government and the Secretary of State for Education? Agreed? Okay, that's fine, we move on to petitions. Oh, okay. Sorry, just an alteration there to the names. We have received two petitions this month. First of all, I would invite councillor Hoodart to submit a petition regarding the Streets for People's proposal in Heaton. Thank you councillor Hoodart.
Thank you Lord Mayor. I'll just read the front of this petition and apologise for my voice at the same time. We the undecided residents of Heaton call upon the City Council to reconsider the current Streets for People proposals by: Holding formal consultation on alternative options for Heaton Road cycle lane; Removing proposals to close junctions of Alexandra and Cartington with Heaton Road; Holding formal consultation on alternative options for Sefton, Cocket and Lesbury; And holding formal consultation on alternative options for Ravenswood and Sackville.
Thank you. I call on Cabinet Member councillor Ainsley to respond.
Thank you Lord Mayor. Thank you for submitting this petition. I believe it reflects the commitments made by officers of the council, including the Director of Public Health, had a meeting in Heaton late last year. The proposals have recently been considered and where initial concepts and any firm proposals arising from this exercise will be subject to a full consultation process once the designs are finalised. And really councillor should know that, that any individual part of any scheme such as Streets for People will go through a full consultation process following that. It's worth adding though that the council have already emailed everybody who's taken part in the initial engagement exercise, so note that we'll be re-examining the location of potential road closures. This includes the areas you've highlighted on Alexandra and Cartington with Heaton Road and alternative options for Sefton, Cocket and Lesbury as requested by local residents. There will be, you know, changes, alternative options are being considered. We've also confirmed that we will not be removing the traffic signals on Heaton Road at St Gabriel's Avenue and have made contact with the local vicar about further targeted work to develop the details of the proposals. The early feedback to people who took part will be followed up by a full engagement report that will be made available to everybody to consider before we go back with firm proposals, which as I've said will be subject to a full consultation. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Ainsley. Does council agree to receive the petition?
Agree.
Thank you. The second petition which we have received has more than 2,500 signatures and is therefore the subject of a time-limited debate at full council. The procedure is that the presenter will have five minutes to present their petition and then there is scope for council to debate the matter for up to, up to 15 minutes. I would be grateful there if each member's contribution is limited of no more than three minutes. Thank you. I now call on Mr Andrew Lambert from Gosforth Traffic to present the petition regarding the Broadway to Brunton Lane cycle scheme. Thank you Mr Lambert.
Thank you councillors. The last time Gosforth Traffic were in this chamber was to discuss the removal of the school crossings. We went on to save one school crossing in Gosforth by crowdfunding £5,000. So we're a strong community back today to ask you to reconsider your decision on a different matter. I'm Andrew Lambert, I co-run the group alongside John Doherty, who spoke last time. Unfortunately, as some of you will know, he was admitted into hospital last Friday or he would have been here himself today. John was the driving force behind this petition, however it was created at the request of the local people, your consistents, for whom we actually speak today. Our petition ran from Friday the 29th of December until Sunday the 7th of January. We received a total of 3,235 signatures in less than 10 days. Most signatures are from the local area and this is reflected on the online comments included with the petition. In late 2015, the council began engagement days on the plans for the strategic cycle lane improvements from Broadway roundabout to Brunton Lane. Finally, in early November 2017, signs appeared finally on lampposts. We were told by officers that work would begin at some point in the next 12 months and as I go to the Cycling Stakeholders Forum, I've been given similar information at that group. In mid-December, we were informed by a local that they had been told that the work would begin in the new year, letters would arrive on doormats between Christmas and New Year. This would include tree felling, recycled paths and the removal of a stone bus shelter. An officer in the Transport Section finally sent a letter to local residents on the last working day before Christmas. Considering that it was over two years since the engagement presentations, people found this to be unacceptable. The letter did not state any details about the works, only referring to the council website, which in turn refers to this 86-page engagement report. Oh, and its statistics show that 41% of over age 75s don't use the internet. This letter was then shared on the Gosforth Traffic website and created a lot of concern. On the 23rd of December, an email was forwarded to us by a resident from a council officer which confirmed the work, which would include the removal of the bus shelter, 13 trees, some of which were in poor health, but it's no wonder because their roots have been tarmacled over. We don't think it's acceptable to remove trees without consulting local people. These trees are after all, public assets, so the public need to be engaged properly. It is proposed that 26 trees will be replanted, however we'd be given no plan or details of this. The council's tree policy is out of date, the last action plan ended in 2012. We therefore have little enough confidence that any replanting will be sustainable or managed appropriately. A revised plan was eventually posted retrospectively on the website on the 5th of January, which was backdated to December. This apparent lack of transparency makes the consultation process look underhanded. The scheme itself is in a self-proclaimed stage five: inform, promote and plan for delivery. You have failed to inform local people, it's easy to understand language about what is actually imminently going to happen in their community, yet this is a Parklands Ward priority. In relation to the stone bus stops, these are regarded by assets by many in the community. Their removal was originally proposed, but it wasn't until December that we discovered that they would initially be replaced by poles due to the bus shelter tender. This is a very exposed section of road, open to the elements, and areas such as Melton Park do not have a bus service. Bus users told us they liked the bus shelter, which is situated well back from the road. You could easily place a wooden bench in it as well. They are concerned that they will be expected to stand in the rain in potential conflict with cyclists approaching at speed. To demolish a bus stop that is over half a century old in keeping with its environment and perhaps ultimately replaced with plastic and metal bus stop is not acceptable in the eyes of the community. Whilst this detail was in the engagement report, people simply did not realise, the message had not got across. Amongst other things, the City Council have failed to inform local residents meaningfully about 13 trees being removed, bus shelters being removed, raised cycle lanes being introduced and the cost of the project jumping by more than a third to £900,000. This is not about cycle lanes. Some of you know I'm a keen cyclist myself and indeed I cycled here today. It's about a lack of information, a lack of recent consultation, a lack of respect for the community who do not have the means to understand and access engagement reports. It's about removing trees without informing the community. It's about the way the scheme is being conducted with little transparency. But finally, it's about it being rushed through after a delay of two years. You had an opportunity on the 22nd of December to engage and yet here you are removing trees and bus shelters with little thought for the local people. We had hoped the council had learnt from the Blue House experience, the importance of meaningful engagement. Blue House was not just about the roundabouts, it was about removing trees and replacing the tarmac for roads and most importantly, we felt it was about engagement. Yet, here we are again. People are frustrated also that this project has started when the works on Killingworth Road are still ongoing at one of the busiest times of the year. Do the council not understand the disruption local people are currently facing due to ongoing major road closures displacing traffic onto this very road? Gosforth Traffic would like to work with officers to help facilitate a meaningful consultation with local people and groups like the parish council. However, to do this, we would require timely, meaningful and accurate information.
Excuse me, Mr Lambert, are you almost complete? Okay, thank you.
The Gosforth Traffic community respectfully ask you to consider your destructive actions on the Broadway to Brunton cycle scheme. We urge you to engage meaningfully with local community with an up-to-date set of proposals in a format which they can understand and can challenge. And finally, wait until other major ongoing road schemes are concluded. Thank you very much for giving Gosforth Charity the opportunity to present this petition.
I'll just go over the process. I will call on councillor Ainsley to respond and then councillor Dunn and then two opposition members will have the opportunity to speak and then councillor Ainsley will have the right to reply. So, could I call on councillor Ainsley please?
Thank you Lord Mayor. And Mr Lambert, I'd like to thank you- Mr Lambert, I'd like to thank you for coming today to let us hear your views. I'd also like to thank all of the residents who've made the effort to attend today's council meeting and also please pass on everyone's best wishes to Mr Doherty in the hope of a speedy return to full health. As local councillors, regardless of the political party we represent, we are committed to democracy and to transparency of decision-making. With this in mind, it is really good to see you all here. This is an important point given your introductory speech references to transparency and states how you feel about, and states that you feel the consultation process was underhanded. In the interests of transparency and to ensure that no one can be accused of being underhanded, as we move forward, I feel it important to highlight some omissions in your description of our consultation. Your speech says that in late 2015, we conducted engagement days and then jumped to November 2017 when signs appeared on lampposts. This is true and a very useful summary, but I think it's also important to add a few more bits in to give a fuller picture, given that quite a lot happened in between those times. The council sent more than 6,000 engagement letters to residents in four tranches relating to consultation and engagement. These included letters in November 2015 linked to engagement days, a follow-up letter in February 2016 outlining the main feedback the council had received to the original process and the next steps. A further letter followed in March 2016 advertising another three weeks of consultation on a revised scheme. Finally, a letter was sent out in August 2016 to people directly affected and by email to those who had commented advising them of the final stage consultation before considering all objections at a regulatory appeals subcommittee in November 2016. This was also when Gosforth Traffic was promoting the existence of our engagement report online and featuring in newspaper articles about changes that related to this area. Of course, elected members in this chamber will easily recall that this is ongoing engagement and consultation and did indeed span a wider timescale than indicated, given this is the fact that, in fact, the third petition we have received on this specific subject. The first two submitted to the meeting in April 2016 by councillor Pauline Allen and also by parish councillor Mark Loftus were responded to by councillor Jed Bell. Following on from that petition and in addition to the letters I've outlined and to notices on public lampposts and in the press, a series of further meetings then took place between senior officers, members of the local community, parish councillors and local councillors. This resulted in additional changes to the scheme before it was finally advertised for consultation again in August 2016. During this time, officers also attended a public meeting organised by ward councillors and parklads to discuss this scheme and other changes that had taken place in the ward. Ultimately, this final point is important because I believe that this petition is not just in relation to trees and bus shelters. It appears to me to be about the frustration with the ongoing roadworks in that particular area of the city and I understand this frustration. It's important however not to lose sight of the rationale for delivering all of these changes, which is to improve the way our city operates and promote sustainable transport to enable people to take a healthier choice for them and for the good of the city. I understand you wish to receive further information to ensure those people who signed your petition are best able, are able to best understand the implications of the scheme and to this end, I propose that I refer this petition to officers with a direction to arrange a meeting with you as petitioners and also with local ward councillors to outline the changes we've made to the scheme throughout the process. I'm also very happy to attend that meeting. The invitation is extended to any of the people in the public gallery who have taken the time to come along to this meeting and the other two community groups who have been in contact about this issue are Save Newcastle Wildlife and Space for Gosforth, who will also be invited to that meeting. At this meeting, your concerns will be discussed and details provided in respect of the work programme, the timescales for the removal of the shelters, what they will be replaced with and which trees are to be removed, when the trees are to be replaced, where and with what. And I hope that addresses your concerns about consultations. Thank you, thank you Lord Mayor.
And I call it by councillor Dunn.
Thank you Lord Mayor, just formally seconding councillor Ainsley's response and the recommendations that she's made in the response.
Thank you very much. We now have two opposition speakers, councillor Ashby.
Thank you Lord Mayor. It's reported that Newcastle has almost a million trees. On the northern gateway to the city, on the Great North Road between Brunton Lane and Broadway, there are about 150. All of those which will be affected by the year-long scheme to complete another link in the Darlington to Blythe route have been surveyed by professional arboriculturalists. We are told that some which are dangerous will be removed and there'll be some tree management, neither of which are vital to the scheme but which are an ancillary benefit. New trees will be planted to create, over time, a more pleasant aspect than the cramped clump growing out of the pavement at Glamms Avenue, which again is not vital to the scheme. We Liberal Democrats could not countenance removal of trees except for reasons of safety, management or for other public good. Time prevents me from telling you about each tree at risk. Each lost will be replaced by two new ones a few yards away, something which local Liberal Democrats have urged for all planning applications involving tree loss. For those local residents in the gallery, email me and I'll send you the map we've been given by officers so you can judge for yourselves, in addition to the invitation from councillor Ainsley, which I welcome. But I feel like people to whom I have already spoken face-to-face and who had signed this petition, you all feel you've been sold a pup that our beloved trees will be massacred to make way for cyclists. That just isn't true. You'll see what the truth is and how wherever possible, the cycleway weaves its way around trees in order to keep them intact. Many of those cyclists using it of course could be and hopefully will be your family, your friends, your neighbours, local children encouraged to be active. We've been talking about the scheme for nearly five years. That of course is part of the perception problem as formal consultation took place two years ago. There have been a lot of changes to it since then, much at our urging, which is why we've also asked the scrutiny committee to include it in its review of major highway schemes. As a result, I've been told that there will be a hearing in public and in Gosforth next month. Lord Mayor, the Liberal Democrats support the acceptance of this petition, its referral to officers with whom we will continue dialogue, especially on car speeds, the recent accidents at the entrance to Melton Park, safer travel for local cyclists and renewal of trees on the northern approach to our great city.
Thank you. Councillor Allen?
Thank you Lord Mayor and thank you Gosforth Traffic. The volume of traffic travelling through Gosforth on the Great North Road is increasing, so we do understand that attempting to get people to cycle and use public transport is part of the solution. But Parklands residents have had to put up with changes to their roads and footpaths for years now. In October 2013, we held a special ward meeting to discuss the traffic improvements for Gosforth as outlined here and only 15 residents attended. I have the minutes for this meeting and only two comments mentioned cycling because it wasn't an issue at this point. And at this point, no one had any idea of the traffic chaos and disruption that was about to visit Parklands Ward or that cyclists would be pitted against non-cyclists, which is what has happened unfortunately. That meeting was the first of many with residents and the number attending has risen as problems have occurred. And I wouldn't like to guess how many emails ward councillors and officers have had to respond to. Meanwhile, residents have had to endure traffic queues and disruption over the years. As ward councillors, we have taken on the role of mediators, especially when workmen did silly things such as try to place a bellicia beacon in the middle of someone's drive. Fortunately, we managed to stop that. Over the years, we've asked for improvements to plans and we've dealt with conflicting requests from residents. And thankfully, officers have tried to adapt plans and come up with solutions to problems. Regarding the Broadway to Brunton section, we've already had a petition as mentioned, read the service road, which fortunately officers changed the plans for. And there have been two meetings of the Traffic Regulatory Subcommittee to discuss different aspects of the scheme and now we have this petition regarding the removal and replacement of trees which has caused much upset. But in all of these years, we've only had one visit from councillor Bell. He attended a packed ward committee meeting of around 150 residents and all that happened was that residents were left feeling they weren't being listened to. So, we recognise that the cabinet have a responsibility to ensure that all work done within the city is done without too much disruption to residents. So I welcome councillor Ainsley's proposal tonight. We also recognise that officers have been busy dealing with other projects in the city at the same time. So as ward councillors, we welcome the chance to have this issue as well as the process and communication strategy of projects such as this one looked at by scrutiny. As while we as ward councillors don't have a problem communicating with residents, the work that we do should be in addition to the council's communication role, not instead of. Thank you Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ainsley, you now have the right to reply.
As I've said, the main point of these changes is to improve the way our city operates and to promote sustainable transport to enable people to take a healthier choice. And taking up councillor Ashby's point on trees, if there are 150 trees along there, I have a statistic that I found out today that if just one person switches from the car to cycling across a full year, that is the equivalent of three trees worth of carbon dioxide. So, you know, the cycleways will more than compensate for the number of trees that may be lost in the scheme. And to take up councillor Allen's point, I look forward to the meeting because I really believe that true consultation is absolutely essential whenever we're doing these schemes. And I go back to my original proposal that I will instruct officers to arrange that meeting in the very near future. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ainsley. Does council agree with councillor Ainsley's proposal? Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr Lambert, for your time. Thank you. Public question time. We have no public questions this evening. We will now move on to Audit Committee Annual Report and I call on Mr Hamish Moore, the independent chair, to introduce the report for information and discussion. Mr Moore will have five minutes to introduce the report and I have asked that he responds to all comments from members at the end of the item and we have allowances for six members to speak. Thank you.
Good evening Lord Mayor, Members of council. My name is Hamish Moore, I'm the independent chair of Audit and the purpose of this report is to highlight to the council the work of the Audit Committee. The context here is that there have been substantial reductions in income, requiring the- the council to alter what it provides and how it works. The audit committee's role in this is to provide assurance to members of the council, the public and regulators that the control environment is effective. Now, clearly, as resources become scarce, controls become more important because there are fewer individuals managing processes and potentially there is more to be done. The key in continuing risk areas of the committee's work have been in four main areas, that is adult and children's care, organisational transformation, treasury management and ensuring that the council is operating within the budget. To give you a flavour of our, of our work, I would like to highlight one area in particular, and that is the adult and children's risk area. The risk in this area is significant. In total, the council spends approximately £100 million per year. The demand for care is likely to increase because of the aging population and because of the increasing awareness of risks to children. And there is a risk of this demand exceeding resources. But there's also the risk of there being a labour supply problem in the next three to five years. Now, both of these matters are national issues, Newcastle is not alone in this. The audit committee is involved in collaborative work with the senior staff in these directorates to try and anticipate the demand and the risks arising, and to see how these risks can be addressed. And I'm pleased to report that this collaborative but challenging approach is working well and is well received by senior officers. The council's external auditors Ernst and Young have commented on this approach as being leading edge, and more generally, they refer other authorities to the committee as an exemplar. The council continues to receive from Ernst and Young a clean audit report this year. I bring to your attention, this is not a rubber stamping exercise, but an in-depth analysis of the systems and controls within the council. And without this clean audit report, there is the risk of the perception of the public one of being poor governance and can lead to a loss of confidence in a council. The result of this clean audit is also a reflection of the very good work of the finance teams. We also continue to achieve a positive audit statement from external auditors in returns of value for money. And lastly, in this respect, the council carries out its own review process of the effectiveness of this committee, and I'm pleased to report that the average score in March 2017 for all activities of the committee was 4.2 out of 5. And I think this is good evidence of the contribution of the work of the committee. Finally, looking forward to 2018, the committee, which has elected members from both groups and three independent members at the moment, will continue to focus on the key risks arising and provide a robust but constructive challenge to officers who enjoy attending the committee. Finally, may I thank my committee colleagues and staff in both democratic services and finance for their support and for those departments who, as I say, enjoy coming to the committee. Thank you.
Questions? Councillor Dunn?
It's not a question, Jane.
Comment, sorry. Are you replying to the report?
I'll do it at the end.
Okay, that's fine. Councillor Falconer?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report and the work of the committee, as much appreciated, and the opportunity to occasionally attend the committee as a fraternal delegate from scrutiny. And I think you make the point in the report about the relationship between scrutiny and audit needing to be a close one to avoid either overlaps or gaps. I just really had one point, and that was almost a suggestion for the workload for next year, if the committee might consider this. I understand that there have been some new SIPF guidelines about investment strategies by local authorities requiring some transparency, which perhaps isn't there at the moment, and expecting that local authorities will publish something in the course of the coming year. I can't quite work out whether this is a matter of scrutiny or audit, but can I just suggest that it might be something that audit would look at? Because I do think it's important, it's caused quite a lot of issues in, perhaps more in other local authorities in the south where they're often investing outside their own area. But it is a point about local authorities getting involved in schemes that produce income streams but may not necessarily be related to their core or normal activities. So I think it would be good that the council should look at it and perhaps you might consider whether audit is the place at which it should be looked. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Hamish, for your report and the clarity of the report, I think is really helpful. I just wanted to mention that it's relatively unusual for an external auditor to be so positive about an audit committee and to recommend other audit committees to look to our audit committee for advice and guidance. So why do you think that is and what do you think we are doing well?
Councillor Raymond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I'd like to thank Hamish for his report and his astute chairmanship of the committee as well, and thank the independent members also for their rigor and the insight that they bring to the, to the meetings. And on a personal note, I'm a relative newcomer to the, to the committee, and during the year in question, my ward colleague councillor David Slessinger was representative from this side of the chamber, so thanks also to him for his expert input and wise counsel on these matters. I'd agree with the assessment in the report of, of an effective committee. Certainly, discussions I've been involved with have given a good level of intelligence challenged officers on issues such as the adults and children's services that Hamish mentions and other budget priorities, and have driven accountability. I'd also say that this committee stands up well compared to other similar ones I've been involved with in other works, other walks of life. However, the enemy that is complacency must always be acknowledged and kept away from the door at all costs, and I'm sure that's something that he thinks about all the time. So thinking about continual improvement, what change would Hamish like to see that hasn't happened yet to improve the effectiveness yet further? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Dunn, do you want to speak now or wait till after the questions have been asked? Okay, just making sure I get it right. Hamish, if you'd like to respond?
Thank you. Well, you raised, you raised three main questions. Taking the first question of the SIPF guidelines regarding investment, you are right that it is primarily a response to some of the activities of other local authorities in investing, for example, in large-scale property transactions. I think your suggestion could be very helpful. What I'll do with that is I will take advice from officers as to whether firstly this falls within the remit of audit committee. I suspect it partly does, but I suspect it partly falls elsewhere. And I think what would be helpful, having taken that advice, is to put that on the agenda and also to invite scrutiny, if that's the appropriate place, because it also has a conduct and transparency issue. So I think the collaborative approach will work well there, but certainly we will bear that in mind and factor it into the agenda. In relation to Marian, Marian's comment about positive comments, audit committees are not generally renowned for places of positive thinking and positive environment, so we take the plaudits where we can get them. But I think, as you say, in all seriousness, it is unusual for an external auditor to make those comments. And the reason why I think the committee is working well is probably three things. First of all, I think we've got a very good collaborative approach in terms of how we're working with most officers. And I think they know we take the matter seriously and that we are challenging but in a reasonably constructive way. I think the second thing is that we're focusing on major risks and we're trying not to get too much into the detail. And I think, thirdly, it's because we're well supported by democratic services and by the risk manager in terms of the quality of the reports coming forward. I think it's helpful having independent members because they, they bring a different perception, but also I think it's helpful that members who come to the committee recognise it's not a political committee and they approach the subject in that way. And in relation to the, the last question, I, I don't think anybody who's ever come to the audit committee would ever suggest that the interactions are in anywhere near complacency. The changes I think we want to see is, is to continue on with the proactive approach that we've got. And I think the response to the challenge to officers in the social care area has been exemplary. We've been trying to get people to say, let's look forward, let's look at the data, let's see what's coming down the track, let's try and prepare in the most proactive way, what are those risks and how can they be adopted? And if we can do that to a greater scale on other big risks, I think we'll be able to, as best we can, provide the best control environment within the council. Thank you.
Councillor Dunn?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just really on behalf of the, the council and the residents of the city, I want to express the, our thanks to Hamish and to the vice-chair councillor Talbot, to all the elected members on the audit committee, to the independent members in particular for their skill and knowledge and challenge that they bring to the role in audit committee. I know it's a very difficult role, I've been there myself, being briefly a member of the audit committee, and I would simply say to any member of council that if they do get the opportunity to either go along to audit committee or to be a member, to take that opportunity, it's a real challenge and it's a real opportunity to learn about the work that this council does, the risks it faces, particularly in these financially challenging times. And it's, it's a great tribute to the members of audit committee that they do give that time to the work of audit committee, and I want to publicly thank them for that work. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Hamish.
Thank you.
Right, everybody, we move on to the council tax base and business rate base. And I'm sure you've all read that document thoroughly and back through it again. The, the, I will call on councillor Dunn to move the report. It will be seconded by councillor McCarthy, and I will then ask councillor Falconer to speak, and after which anyone who wishes to speak can take part in this debate. And they'll only be allowed up to five minutes. So can we start with councillor Dunn, please? Councillor Dunn, you remove the report?
Yes, I am indeed. I would like to move the report and recommendations, Lord Mayor, and like you, I would want to offer my congratulations to those who've managed to read the full report and the supplemental agenda, as well as thanking the financial technocrats in resources who put the report together. I think there's just three things I want to highlight in connection with the report. First is the increase in the numbers for the council tax base for residential properties. Second, the continued high collection rate indicator. And then, thirdly, the revised council tax reduction scheme, which is at appendix four and in the report in paragraph 4.1, which has been widely consulted on and reported. And I think there are just two other comments in addition, that there's continued uncertainty about the settlement funding assessment, and that's better known to you and to me as the RSG. Although the fair funding review has now been published, frankly, I don't expect it to have any good news for Newcastle. And the second thing to report on is that from 2020/21, the business rate retention local share will increase from 50% to 75% and will incorporate ratesport grant, revenue sport grant, public health and other grants with some transitional arrangements that frankly we just don't know about yet, they haven't told us what they'll be. But with that, and it's a very complex report, Lord Mayor, and I understand the complexities of it, I'd like to move the report and recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Councillor McCarthy to second the report?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Can I just echo councillor Dunn's comments in relation to the detail contained in the report? It is a very lengthy document, but it needs to be thorough and cover everything. So can I echo Veronica's thanks to staff and her thanks to her well done to everyone who's read it across the council chamber? I'm really pleased, Lord Mayor, that this council continues to do all we can to look at new and imaginative ways to protect the most vulnerable in our city, so including the revised council tax reduction scheme, and I know there are winners and losers in that, but it's another example of what this council is trying to do to reduce the burden on those people across our city who are really struggling. And for transparency and openness, the integrated impact assessment is included within the papers tonight, it's on page 47, if you haven't got that far in. Lord Mayor, it is a formal report, and I'm delighted that we have got more houses in the city. More houses mean we end up with more income, more people, more families paying council tax. And as a council, as councillor Dunn has said, we will be more and more reliant on local taxpayers to make sure that we can run services in this city. So I think the increase of 1,600 homes is a significant benefit to our income, our council tax reduction scheme helping those in greatest need. As, as usual, Lord Mayor, I encourage colleagues to check out the calculation in appendix A. I love the way local government operates, that we've got such complicated schemes and we've got to follow it, we've got to do it that way. And that, I just, I think that appendix A is just really funny. Lord Mayor, can I second the report?
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Falconer?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I haven't really read every page of that report. I've tried, I've tried to speed read it and understand it, and I don't really understand the algebra because that was never one of my strong points. But nonetheless, thanks also from our point of view to the team that put it together, to the officers. Just one, one comment on the council tax reduction scheme. We think you're doing a good job on it and we do support the move to a banded scheme, it has lots of benefits. But one of the major disbenefits is this problem with any banded scheme, that if you just tip over from one band to another, you might have the most marginal of increase in your income, but actually you can have a substantial reduction. And I just wondered if there was any kind of hardship appeal type process that might be within that or that you could look at. So that's point number one. Point number two, on the council tax base itself, last year, it's simply increased by, by about 1%. This year, and I don't think it's all to do with, or perhaps you could enlighten me, I don't think it's all to do with the extra houses, it's going up by two and a half percent. So if you then say, okay, on an assumed consistent collection rate, same year, one year to another, and if we're increasing by 3.9% and possibly more, because I understand you'll now be considering the implications of the government's willingness to, to allow 3% increases in council tax without a referendum, that, that looks like a 6% or 7% increase in council tax income. And I'd just be grateful if you could perhaps confirm that that is my understanding and give me any idea of your thinking about how you might approach this new flexibility, given that we're partway through a council tax and budget consultation for 1819. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a few observations about the table on page 45 about domestic rating. For some time, I've been quoting that 70% of our houses are in bands A and B, and yet I was corrected by someone in the course of last year saying, no, it's actually 60%. But according to my calculations on that table, it's still actually over 70% of, of domestic houses are in bands A and B, and only 6.78% of them are in band D, which is what the government obliges us to quote. I think that just simply tells us quite a great deal about the tax base that we deal with in this city.
Don't have anyone else who has shown that they want to speak in this debate? So can I now call on councillor Dunn to reply?
Just, just briefly, as far as the disbenefit that councillor Falconer refers to in the council tax reduction scheme, yes, but lines have to be drawn somewhere. You know, it, it could be a marginal could be a marginal difference in someone's income that trips them over into a level of entitlement, but any individual cases of hardship can quite clearly be looked at, and they need to contact the revenues and benefits about that. The increase in the council tax base, yes, there is an increase due to the numbers of houses that have been built, and there are, the level at which a referendum would need to be held has been raised, but of course, that was subsequent to our budget going out for consultation with the proposals that were contained therein. So we're analysing the results of the consultation, considering what impact this would have, and of course, any proposals will be part of the council, the report on the council budget when it comes to Cabinet in February and council in March. And I think I can just reassure councillor Cook that the, of the accuracy of the figures into which the properties have been banded, they are correct, and that is, and unfortunately, it does have a severe impact on the amount of income that council can generate, that we've got such a high proportion of properties in the lower bands and not in band D, which is the assumed average. So again, just ask council to agree the report and the recommendations. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
We have to take a named vote on this item, so can everybody ensure they're sitting in their seats, and can we ring the bell, please? And we're taking a named vote on the recommendations as amended by the supplemental agenda. Yeah? Okay, we're just, vote finished. Thank you very much, that report has been agreed. Right, reports from Cabinet, item 9A, devolution. I call on councillor Forbes to move the report, seconded by councillor McCarthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and this item was considered by Cabinet in December, but we felt it, as on the previous occasion where we debated this issue, of such significance that we wanted to refer this to City Council for full consideration. The devolution proposals that are currently out for public consultation have been based on a strong collaboration between the North of Tyne authorities of Newcastle, North Tyneside and Northumberland over a number of years, united in our determination to drive our region forward. This deal is fundamentally about creating more and better jobs in our region, the region of England, which has the highest level of unemployment of any region, and it's the start of a journey. Nobody, I think, would assume that the deal that we've got to now will be the sum total of where we may end up. This is the first step on our region's journey towards devolution, and I hope very much that by the time we get to the point of the mayoral election that's described in this report, we'll have at least another deal, if not another couple of deals, under our belts to be proud of within the North East. There are a number of aspects to this deal which I think are very significant. Firstly, we know that the government has, at the back end of last year, announced an industrial strategy, and this is the first of the devolution deals in the entire country to be a place-based approach to the industrial strategy, offering to strengthen the economic sectors of energy, culture and creative industries, the digital sectors and the life sciences sectors, in a way that play to our economic strengths and really build those into world-class, internationally competitive sectors that we can really be proud of. We think those are the sectors not only where we have the existing strengths, but we have the greatest opportunities for further development. And this is to be underpinned by faster rollout of superfast broadband connectivity across the North of Tyne region. We also have a commitment for a housing and land board which will lead us to a housing growth deal. We know that we've debated a number of times in this chamber our ambitious house growth, housing growth numbers, and for many of us who've been in this chamber a long time, the story of the North East has been one of a declining population, and for the first time in probably three or four decades, that has turned around, and our population has started to grow. We need to accelerate that growth of housing numbers, and we need government help in order to do that, whether that's bringing land to the table, whether that's helping to de-risk projects, or whether that's making sure that we increase the amount of affordable housing that we have on offer, and the amount of specialist housing that we have on offer for particular community needs across our populations. So there's a very significant element of this deal which leads us towards improving the housing offer, and there's also a level of rural stewardship, because part of the deal is being a pilot for excellence in protecting and preserving our rural areas and our market towns. At the heart of the deal, though, is investment in people. An inclusive growth board will oversee a number of initiatives, including the first educational improvement challenge outside of London, to ensure that all of our schools are pushing all of our children to achieve their greatest potential. Devolution of the entire adult skills budget, something that we've long called for here so that we can make better use of existing resources and join up what can sometimes feel like very unconnected programmes into a comprehensive whole. Attracting and retaining graduates, tackling barriers to unemployment, addressing the real issues that hold people with long-term disabilities or health conditions back, and improving the recruitment retention of people in the workplace with such conditions. And we've all heard the horror stories about the work programme and the difficulties that people have with the work programme. Here is an opportunity for us to start shaping a very different offer for the people that need help to get into work and to remain in work. And all this is underpinned by an investment fund of £20 million a year, a total of £600 million over the lifespan of the investment fund, but the intention is, as with any significant investment fund like this, to use it to leverage in other resources and to use it to bring other monies to the table by match funding initiatives. So we reckon that with the private sector leverage that this could bring, this deal itself could lead towards 10,000 extra new jobs and £2.1 billion of private sector investment. Crucially, though, it's about our region not being left behind. Last time we debated this in this council chamber in 2016, the concept of devolution to mayoral combined authorities was academic. Now it's real. We see places like Greater Manchester, the West Midlands, Merseyside, Cambridgeshire and Peterborough, the Bristol city region, all now having elected mayors in place, driving forward their agenda. And that's particularly significant in the post-Brexit Britain, where the government have made it clear that those places with elected mayors will be the places that they engage with first on the shaping of the future of regional aid policy, which will replace EU structural funds. And we've got a foretaste of that in the budget with the Transforming Cities Fund, where the government announced a £1.7 billion fund, 50% of which is directly allocated to places with elected mayors. So, Lord Mayor, if we don't do this, we're simply at risk of being left behind, of losing out on opportunities, on not achieving the things that we want to achieve for our region. So, Lord Mayor, there is much in this package to be pleased with, I think there's much more that we could do, nobody would pretend that this is perfect, but I do hope that council will agree that this is an important next step forward for the devolution of powers and responsibilities to our region, so that those of us that have dreamed long and hard around having decisions that affect the region taken in the region can take some hope that for the first time in a very long time, we've taken significant steps forward to achieving that dream of devolution to the North East, and this is the very first step in what I hope is a much longer journey.
Thank you councillor Forbes. Councillor McCarthy?
Lord Mayor, can I second and reserve the right to speak, please?
We have an amendment, and I will call on councillor Stone to move, seconded by councillor Ashby. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to start tonight by going back to some comments made in 2011, famous quote that only councillor Forbes could deliver the best deal for Newcastle by, because he could work more effectively with other Labour leaders on Tyneside to get the best for the area. The fact that he has not been able to deliver this on devolution is the reason why we're having this debate tonight. This is not the first step, as he claims, we heard similar claims of a brave new world and fantastical job creation powers when NECA was established. I don't think even the leader of council believes that NECA has been a success, he wasn't willing to confirm NECA is fit for purpose at the last council meeting. The big question he has to address tonight is why he's confident this time it will be different. I want to make it very clear that this side of the chamber are strongly supportive of devolution, providing that powers and resources available are adequate and importantly fit for purpose. Many of the priorities of the proposed deal are very important, we support and warmly welcome the educational improvement challenge, the Brownfield regeneration fund, the SME Gallup programme, the skills and lifelong learning and the employability agenda that the deal sets out, and of course, we are fully supportive of additional funding. But it is undeniable that the deal on the table excludes the more significant powers offered to other mayoral city regions, particularly in respect of health and social care and transport, we are already falling behind, and this disparity risks our area being further left behind by other northern city regions who are already using these powers to increase their prosperity and their wellbeing. Today's Yorkshire Post, I note, is urging its local leaders to support a One Yorkshire deal rather than second-class patchwork deals on a sub-regional basis. We think it is still a matter of regret that the deal fails to include Gateshead, and that the current arrangements have failed to work together effectively to get the best deal for Tyneside. A devolution deal which divides Newcastle and Gateshead is flawed, the Centre for City says that the geography of the new deal is far from ideal, it will lead to a situation where the North of Tyne is competing with the South of Tyne and the Tees Valley for resources and for investment, and that is not in the best interests of our region. We should face some uncomfortable truths, there is no huge public climate for this, there is no public mandate for this, doubts have been expressed about whether the arrangements will work or indeed whether they are valid. For better or for worse, this deal has been progressed behind closed doors until tonight. Members of the council owe it to the citizens we represent to scrutinise this deal, and above all, to confirm that it is fit for purpose before we endorse it. I am therefore forced to, obliged to ask the question, is the council confident that the deal is fit for purpose and compliant with statutes? I hope that members of council have read the article by Professor Tomlin in The Journal on why he feels the deal is not legally compliant. It deserves reading in full, but I'll read one quote from it. "It is not the product of any logic of rational local governments, more effective economic development, or underlying local identity. Rather, it is the outcome of a pressing need for another devolution deal, albeit one that does not meet the government's own criteria of liking a success." In light of this criticism made by a well-respected expert on the, on North East devolution, we think it is in the public interest of the citizens of Newcastle and the best interests of Tyneside and Northumberland that they are responded to tonight. The opposition thinks it's important that the leader publicly states tonight how and why he considers the deal passes the tests on interest and the identity of communities, on effectiveness and convenience of local governments, and how it will meet the criteria of success. I hope the leader is summing up, and perhaps other speakers in the debate can set out clearly why they believe that is, this is the case, and then we can make an informed decision on this tonight. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stone. Can we now call on councillor Ashby, please, to move the, second the amendment?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is a significant and serious decision. As members will recall, I've spoken here of the desirability of devolved powers and my concerns about the slow pace of approach, particularly because of foot-dragging from Labour councils south of the river, which is why at first I welcomed the North of Tyne pressing on without them. But I'm also old enough to remember the fiasco of Labour's referendum on devolution, which offered too little too late and was rejected by the region. We need to be certain we're taking a soundly based decision that is in the best long-term interests of the North of Tyne area and which is broadly acceptable. There are few people better qualified to comment on these proposals than Professor John Tomlin. He led Newcastle University's Centre for Urban and Regional Development. He was the chair of the campaign for a regional assembly at the 2004 regional referendum. Many people reading his article will, if they're honest with themselves, recognise he expresses some home truths, describing the deal as "the thinnest gruel". I don't have time here to recap all his main points, but I must quote his finding that the North of Tyne deal, quotes, "does not appear to meet the legal criteria for establishing a combined authority set out in section 110 of Labour's 2009 Local Democracy and Economic Development Act." The other concerns he identifies at length, under which the leadership is no doubt aware, are pertinent ones for council to consider. There is in our view no clear evidence that the proposals demonstrate they reflect the interests and identities of local communities, or that they secure effective and convenient local government, which is, for the voice of doubt, a clearer explanation of how the deal satisfies the tests in the 2009 Act, any legal advice the council has received, and how the governance review process supports it is required. Professor Tomlin damningly expressed his reservations. Council can ignore them and push through these proposals, or it can address them, and if necessary, delay this decision to take and tell us of independent expert advice as quickly as possible. I suggest to council that the path to wisdom and enlightenment lies in the latter, not the former course. If it leads to a stronger, more robust, and more successful outcome for our area, so much the better. I second the amendment.
I have no one who's, oh, councillor Falconer, sorry.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. You know, we've just taken a report on audit, and audit is about making sure that we do things properly, and in a way, this is what this amendment is about. It's not about the principle of devolution, as councillor Stone has said, we're very much committed to devolution, and we wish this deal, if it is perfectly clear to proceed, all the best, because we need that extra investment, and we need some new approaches that put power in our hands, in local hands, around skills and employment and all the things that the leader mentioned. However, what you're getting with this amendment of ours is one of two things. First, I think you're getting legitimate questions that need to be addressed and asked, if we're be able to prove that we are doing it in the proper kind of way. And secondly, and I'll be honest with this, you're getting a degree of frustration and irritation from this side of the council about the way in which it's all happened, because it's been delivered to us in the most arrogant way. The number of times we, on this side, in the last year and a half, have asked the leader to give us an update on the progress, and he said, there's no progress, wait until we announce something. He even denied when I said that I'd seen the former leader of Northumberland Council and the leader of North Tyneside come out of his office in the civic centre, I remember him saying, well, I wasn't there, they weren't meeting me, as if nothing really is happening. So this is a deal that's been cooked up with the government, and it's, and all the things that we extol about the importance of consultation, consultation to get buy-in at the right time to get public endorsement, have been completely ignored, we get a press release saying it's happened, it's part of the Autumn Statement, and then we're told here's a consultation on it, and do we really think anything will change with this consultation, post-event consultation? I doubt it very much. On the points that councillor Forbes raises, on the 2000 Act, the compliance, only one of three things can happen. Either it was considered in the discussions with government, and it was agreed it was perfectly straightforward, in which case simply published the information and advice, and everybody would be happy. Or it wasn't discussed at all, because it was just, it was kind of forgotten about. Or it was discussed and it was known about, but the government was so desperate to get a devolution deal through that they wanted to ignore it, and councils were prepared to do the same. So I think it's really important that we make sure we do this thing in the right kind of way, it'll go some measure towards getting that kind of endorsement that we talk about. And I saw that councillor Forbes, in the newspaper, was, he was accusing us on this side of being hypocrites because of what our leader had said about the importance of devolution. We're on the same hymn sheet as Vince Cable and you and your party on the importance of devolution and how we must take it forward, but it must be done in the right kind of way, and I'm not sure we've done it in the right kind of way yet.
Councillor Avery?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So, like Professor Tomlin, I supported the campaign in 2004 for a regional assembly. I'm proud to have voted for it. I still have a beer mat from the Yes campaign on my bedside table. I thoroughly support it. However, it is utterly bizarre to now say that we should reject this sort of approach, because we want one that includes the whole of the North East. Importantly, Professor Tomlin and the members opposite have said, "Well, there's a problem because the north of Tyneside and indeed the south of Tyneside would be competing with Tees Valley. Tees Valley has chosen to establish a mayoral authority. We are not in a position to force them to change their mind and to disestablish that mayoral combined authority." And I'd note that councillor Stone said that it is a great idea that Yorkshire is trying to pursue a One Yorkshire approach. I'd note that at every stage, the government has said it will not consider that and has rejected it. So if we are to wait continually for a perfect system that best meets what councillor Stone wants, we will get nothing. And that is the reality of this. Delay and delay will get us nowhere, and you cannot say at the same time that you're impatient about slow process and that we're not going fast enough, but also that we need to delay for a magical system that the government will not agree to, as said very clearly it will not agree to, that requires Tees Valley to remove its combined authority and choose to join us, and requires lots of other councils south of Tyneside to do things they've said they will not do. I think this is extremely unlikely, and we should support, notwithstanding any legal issues, we should support this proposal rather than continue to prevaricate.
Councillor John?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm just amazed at what waste of time this is. I mean, councillor Faulkner talked about there being legitimate questions. You know, what I would say is there's some exceedingly spurious assertions being made by John Tomlin, who's got absolutely no status in this whatsoever. I'm actually reminded of a saying that my granny had when me and the rest of my brothers were children. You know, "If you've got nothing sensible to say, keep your gob shut." And really, what strikes me about this discussion, what strikes me about this discussion, Lord Mayor, is basically four words: put foot in mouth. And I think that's exactly what's happening. I think we've got a perfectly sensible proposal, which I'm sure has been crawled all over by the right people, and no offer would have been made if it hadn't been crawled over in fine detail. And it's the right thing for the three councils involved. It's the way forward for us and for our residents in the future. It opens lots of doors and lots of avenues to secure our future, and that's exactly the way we should be going. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor John. Councillor McGinnis?
Do you know, this really, really annoys me, because it is a complete and a waste of time. This, and the headline in the paper yesterday, is a prime example of trying to get a headline and a speech at absolutely all cost, even at the cost of a prosperous devolution deal that's been years in the making. The Lib Dems in favour of devolution, just not on the terms negotiated by the elected administrations of the three authorities involved. Contrary to what councillor Faulkner has said, I would disagree. I think that we've had lots of updates on devolution, and right up until this point, there's been support. But of course, this is the style of our opposition. Which Lib Dem should we listen to today? Should we listen to Sir Vince Cable, the respected leader of the Lib Dems nationally, who's told us to crack on and get on, yeah, sorry, previously, and told us to crack on and get on with this deal? Or should we listen to Greg Stone, who's lifting his policy off the pages of the opinion pieces? Thank you.
Councillor Kemp?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just for clarification, I don't respect Vince Cable. I would just like to say, I think it's somewhat ironic that the Liberal Democrats now appear to be led by a previous professor of Newcastle University, as opposed to the leader from this side, from that side of the room, who chose not to make any objection when this item was taken to Cabinet pre-Christmas. The only issue that Anita seemed to be interested in was the role of scrutiny and whether the opposition would have a participatory role in that. So it seems to me that to someone come along now, potentially hijack for the sense of political headline, the opportunities that this regional deal can give us, and it is the first stage of a process. If you look at every other region where this process has developed, they're on stage three, stage four, stage five deals, and that's obviously what's coming here. Thin gruel, well, it's better than no gruel whatsoever. And I'm minded to say that you're putting at risk the opportunities for the future generations of this region for a pathetic headline, but that won't be the first, and I have no doubt it won't be the last time, Greg.
Thank you. Councillor Lambent?
I just wish to endorse most of the sensible comments on this side of the chamber. I'm not being funny, but quite frankly, this is just like a typical Lib Dem sideshow that we used to see in the 1980s, the 1990s, looking for a cheap shot. Now, you know, quite frankly, what is on offer here, and it's the only game in town, you've got the business community, the trade union community, you've got sensible academics, not some bloke who teaches politics or at some polytechnic in London, right, who's got actually a bugger all to do with the North East. You've got PolicyNorth, you've got a business-led organising... Let me finish, please. You've got a business-led think tank called PolicyNorth, totally in favour of this deal. It's not ideal, no one says it is. But what this deal amounts to basically is to challenge the real issues that face the people of Tyneside, North Tyneside, Northumberland, some of these coastal communities, which have extremely high rates of unemployment. You've got 21% of 18 to 25-year-olds in the North East, north of the Tyneside, who are needs, who have been out of work for over a year. You've got above national average unemployment. You've got large numbers of people who are disaffected. And this deal, quite frankly, it's not brilliant, it's not ideal, but it provides a stepping stone to something far more important in years to come. And for this ridiculous nonsense, quite frankly, sniping at the sidelines, okay, trying to find some sort of flaw in the council's case is just, quite frankly, pathetic. And what you people need to be putting, quite frankly, rather than your petty political parochial interests, right, is the needs of the long-term unemployed, the needs of the long-term unemployed, right, the needs of people, the white working class, who tend to be underachievers, right, across this region, an opportunity to bridge the class divide, to basically secure investment and to challenge long-term unemployment. These are the issues that face the people of the North East, not some sort of petty-minded quibbles that we're seeing from the opposition benches. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lambent. Councillor McCarthy, you reserve the right to speak.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I won't pick up, because I think my colleagues have adequately dealt with the range of comments from the opposition this evening. Lord Mayor, let's just remember where this came from, because many of us in this council chamber will remember, this is a George Osborne and previous leader of the Lib Dems, Nick Clegg's version of devolution. It isn't ideal, I think many of us in this room would accept that, but they are the terms under which we have got to negotiate, and the current government are in until 2022, so it's what we've got to work with. We accept, Lord Mayor, that the investment that's on offer does not replace the millions that we've lost, although of course, you know, through austerity, but of course, we do welcome what small amounts of money this brings with us. And, Lord Mayor, just to remind us of what this is about, it's about devolving down from national government. It is not about taking things away from the local authority. We continue to do all that we can to protect services across this city. It isn't about that. As we know, and as the leader of council has outlined, being part of the devolution club, if that's what you think of it as, it gives us, as an area, much greater access to resources. We saw in the recent budget that elected mayors for combined authorities, they're increasingly invited to speak on issues, actually, whether or not it's within their own remits in their roles. They're increasingly invited to be involved in, you know, key areas of work that the government are leading on. And some of the recent budget announcements about transport, local growth fund, infrastructure investment, is being prioritised through mayoral combined authorities. And as a local authority, working in partnership with others, we can't access that funds, we have limited access to that. So this obviously will open doors for us as a city. And I appreciate the comments from the opposition around some of the areas that are included in this work, they're crucial to help, you know, we've got to provide jobs, we've got to ensure quality education, and the adult skills money is a really, really good way of having some say over things that we are closer to, and the government shouldn't be telling us what we're doing. We're hoping, of course, if this is all agreed, that this is the first of many deals. I think Manchester are up to number four, they've probably got several more in the pipeline. We need to be in exactly the same place. And not necessarily about transport, because transport has to be on a wider footprint than north of Tyneside, so I don't agree with councillor Stone in relation to that. You know, we have to make sure that our transport structures in the region work for transport across the region, and that cannot just be a north of Tyneside issue. So we've got to consider that much more in the round. But, Lord Mayor, I think we also have ideas about what next we should be asking for, so this is the first of many. Of course, we've got hurdles to get through before we get to that. Lord Mayor, can I support the proposals? And I think what we want to do on this side of the council chamber is get on and deliver, make a difference for our people, so that actually they have the chance to succeed where others have not. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McCarthy. Councillor Forbes, you have the right to reply.
Lord Mayor, perhaps I can just paint a picture of the final meeting that we had as the three leaders with a succession of government ministers in November, a two-and-a-half-hour meeting in Parliament, where we went through the detail of this deal and thrashed out the final points of it. And at the end of that meeting, the senior Treasury minister, who was sponsoring the deal on behalf of government, came over to us and said how refreshing it was, I hope I'm not betraying too many confidences, how refreshing it was to see grown-up, joined-up politics from the North East, a region which has become characterising government as not being able to get its act together. And I have to say, colleagues will know, my colleagues will know, that I've been pacing up and down the office today, wondering if this amendment was some kind of joke. When I was first alerted to it by the press release that came out yesterday, I didn't actually see the amendment until late this afternoon, I just couldn't get my head around why the Lib Dems would try to stop job creation and job promotion powers in the region of England with the highest level of unemployment. I couldn't understand why the point that councillor Stone seems to be banging on about couldn't have just been cleared up in a very straightforward email exchange with the head of legal services. After all, this deal isn't just something that we've announced, it was announced by the government in the budget. See, of course, it's been looked at by the lawyers, of course, it's compliant with the legislation, we wouldn't have done it if it hadn't been, and I don't understand quite why we've had this whole rigmarole tonight. Except I do, actually, it's because the person that's been pushing this on behalf of his party can't help but try to get a cheap headline wherever he possibly can. And he doesn't care about the people that we're working for, he doesn't care about the future opportunities that we're trying to create, he doesn't care about the people that this will help to get back into work, he doesn't care about the future of this region, he only cares about trying to get his name in the paper and to have a pop at this side of the chamber. That is not grown-up politics, that's not mature sensible politics, that's not about taking the region's best interests at heart. And the thing that I just don't understand is that his colleagues must speak to the same business leaders and academic leaders and university leaders that I speak to. You must talk to them all, you must hear the same things that I hear, which is, they want us to come together as a city and as a region to unite around this deal, to make the best opportunities for it. You must hear those messages, you must hear the things that they're saying to us. So why on earth are you supporting this ridiculous amendment put forward tonight by councillor Stone? It just shows that the Liberal Democrats, which used to be taken as a semi-serious party in this country, have been reduced to developing policy by reading the opinion pages of one of the local newspapers. It's quite an extraordinary fall from grace and completely a ridiculous way about going about politics. And of course, it's odd, and I can't understand this, because when we get to the mayoral election, whoever is going to be the Lib Dem candidate is going to have to face the fact that the Lib Dem group in this council voted against the devolution proposal that's on us tonight, in the full knowledge that the Lib Dems' regional media spokesperson tried to stop the deal. I can't understand why anybody would want their candidate to go into the election with such a huge millstone around their neck. That shows that they're not serious about the future of our region, shows that they're not interested in anything but other than petty point scoring, and it shows, Lord Mayor, that we're prepared to get on with a serious job of delivering on making our region a better place to live, to work, and to learn, and a place that is able to punch its weight on the national agenda, something which has not happened for such a long time in this region. And I very much hope that council will give this deal its full support tonight.
Thank you, councillor Forbes. We will now vote on the amendment. Could we ring the bell, please, and have a named vote? Thank you. I think he did answer that, actually. The amendment is lost. Do we need to vote on the substantial amendment, substantial? Yeah? Is it agreed, or do we need a vote? You want a named vote? Okay, could we ring the bell, please? Ten people need to stand if we have a named vote? Okay, thank you very much. We will now have a named vote on the original notice of motion. Thank you. Shh, everybody, come on, we're doing all right. Okay, that was agreed by full council. Thank you very much. Now, now, Miss Councillor.
Lord Mayor, I'm a point of order. In my 14 years in this chamber, I don't think we've, I've ever had a debate where all the one-party speakers were called first and then all another party's speakers were called afterwards. It's always been interleaved, and, you know, the quality of the debate is subjective, but I think it would have been improved if it had been mixed up more.
There wasn't any other Liberal speakers other than I called?
Lord Mayor, you can't, it was either three or four from this side, and then all the speakers from the other side.
Thank you. Councillor Softley?
It really does not do anything for the debate if it's done like that, Lord Mayor, and I've never seen it before.
Okay.
Lord Mayor, just to confirm the process of understanding orders, the mover and seconder of the original motion speak first, then the mover and the amendment of, sorry, the mover and seconder of any amendment speak, and that was the order in which the speakers were taken. You then have six speakers, I think there's one Lib Dem spokes speaker, and then there were five Labour speakers, but no other Lib Dem members indicated an intention to speak, so I don't think there was any.
But that's my point, Lord Mayor, is councillor Faulkner had been called later in the debate.
Councillor Faulkner had his name up first, so therefore you call the first person that puts his name up, his hand up, sorry, councillor Faulkner. So I followed the way people indicated they want to speak. Thank you. Okay, questions by members. We have received seven questions marked for... We have received seven questions marked for written reply. These with responses have been circulated and also displayed in the foyer. Cabinet member reports. Before we start the cabinet member report, can I remind members to be to the point of their questions, please? We're doing extremely well and it would be nice to get through everything tonight. So can we first start with councillor Dunn? Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Listening to what you've said, I will be very brief and formally move my fourth portfolio report. It's been to scrutiny and I would like to thank members of scrutiny for their keen interest in the report and for the questions that they asked, all of which were answered on the day. So the questions and the responses will be in the minutes of that meeting, but if they are of necessity, any other questions today, I'm happy to try to answer them. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This question has sort of arisen since the report to scrutiny, so I hope Veronica will take the question or agree to answer it by writing to us all afterwards. And it's about pensions. When we had the scrutiny call-in on the Parks Trust, I'll be as quick as I can, a comment was made that the employees who had touped into the trust outside the organisation would maintain their pension rights but would not take a share of the current pension liability or deficiency with them. I wondered if the same was true for the new JV, where up to 200 members of our staff, presumably a proportion of whom are in the pension scheme, are going to Northumberland. And I certainly know it, it doesn't seem to be true in not dissimilar circumstances, where organisations who are engaging with the council about asset transfer and that kind of thing are being told that in their business case, which the council is going to evaluate, they must carry a liability if they have or have had any staff who were in the pension scheme. And that is a real kind of issue that's arisen, certainly in my ward and with a couple of other organisations. So I wonder if she might just either tonight say something or write to us just to clarify when you are or not carrying forward a share of the pension liability. Because it seems that if contributors are leaving the council, but the deficiency which is notionally allocated to everybody is not reflecting that, then it seems highly unfair on everybody who's left, because it makes it a prorata, bigger deficiency for everybody else, if you know what I mean. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Higgins?
Yes, just a couple of brief points then, Lord Mayor, in view of your earlier comments. Can I thank councillor Dunn for her very informative report. Can I also thank her for her contribution to the issue around devolution earlier on? It was the most entertaining speech I've heard in this council chamber in quite a long time, I really enjoyed that. But my question relates to a very topical issue of our mental health and the very constructive comments in the report about raising awareness of this issue, particularly in relation to our workforce, who are facing so many challenges at the moment. So could the cabinet member, would the cabinet member like to comment on the effectiveness of the mental health workshops that are detailed in the report, the progress made to recruit mental health champions, both from within the workforce and from outside the workforce, to tackle the stigma previously associated with mental health issues? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. I do have a very brief question. Councillor Dunn, I believe that we've had a recent staff survey conducted, would you like to share some results with us tonight?
Thank you. Councillor George Patterson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. My question is, councillor Dunn, within your report, you don't seem to have mentioned, in case I've missed it, the dying to work campaign. Has anything happened regarding this matter?
Councillor Stone?
Thank you. Following the question about the staff survey, and if it's in order to ask a question about the resident satisfaction survey, which the council has put press releases out about but hasn't actually published the full details or made available to members, can she give assurances that members will get full information on the resident satisfaction survey results, including on a ward-level basis? Thank you.
Councillor Stevenson, JP Stevenson?
Can you give any updates about, you mentioned the shared services agreements in your report, could you have been any developments, any updates?
Thank you. Any further questions? No, councillor Dunn, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This may not be the older of us, but I will try to do my best. On the pensions question that councillor Faulkner asked in relation to the liability, previous pension liability, I think what he's referring to, and I'm going to deal with it in a little bit more detail in answer to the question councillor Stevenson asked, John Paul Stevenson. The point about pensions liability is that it's built into the business case in relation to the shared services agreement. I don't know what joint venture councillor Faulkner is talking about, he may be talking about the joint committee arrangements that will be put in place for the shared services agreement, which I'll come back to. But if you would like to clarify his question in more detail, I'll make sure that it gets answered. I think the next one was councillor Higgins, and thank you for the, well, I'm not sure if it was a compliment, but I'll take it as a compliment. It is true that the council has signed the time to change pledge and to help us to be committed to reducing the stigma which can be associated with mental illness. And there have been a range of mental health sessions, including resilience and mindfulness being run, and we're also just launching a new series of workshops for managers called How Are You Today, to support managers in their role around health and wellbeing, and that's both for themselves and for members of their teams. This work supplemented by our trained mental health first aiders and our network of health advocates, along with our partnership work with Unison. It's impossible to say how people have responded, how they take the outcome, you know, I mean, you know, they take what they take from it, councillor Higgins. All I can say is that we take the issue extremely seriously and try and support all of our staff to the best of our ability. Then I think the next one was from councillor Holland about the staff survey. Well, yes, there was a staff survey carried out recently, and I'm pleased to say that some information on it was published by the chief executive in News and Brief, and I would like to commend members to have a look at that report in News and Brief. But I think it's just a couple of statistics worth saying, that it was the highest return we've ever had, going up from forty-three percent in 2015 to sixty-three percent now. And whilst the analysis of the individual directorate results is still ongoing, there has been an opportunity to share some of the initial findings with the staff trade unions in various meetings that have taken place. And there will be full information published on the internet about the results of the staff survey. I think the next question was from councillor Patterson about the dying to work campaign. And I do apologise for the omission from my report on this matter, but just to say that the council is very, very happy to sign this charter, and I understand that either the leader or the deputy leader is making arrangements to do that sometime in the near future. But it's about building on our existing good practice in sensitively supporting terminally ill staff, taking account of their personal and financial circumstances. And I'm very proud that we are regularly asked to sign up to these joint campaigns with our trade unions. Then I think councillor Stone asked a question about the residents survey, most of which I was unable to hear, but I do want to say that I do know about the residents survey. A report on the outcome of the residents survey has already been to scrutiny and it's not in my portfolio, so I can't really answer any more, but I'm sure if the question is pointed to the correct member, a response will be made. And then lastly, the question from councillor Stevenson, thank you very much, referred to shared services. Now, I have referred to this in probably all three of my previous reports and said these things don't happen overnight. You know, this one in particular has taken some two years of, you know, constant discussion, negotiation and working out fine detail with our colleagues in Northumberland. But there is a report with recommendations on setting up a shared transactional services arrangement with Northumberland County Council, which is going to cabinet on the fifteenth of January. The full report is on the council's website, and it includes all the necessary information, although there is some confidential information, which is about the business case for the arrangement, which does include what I think councillor Faulkner was trying to refer to, although he referred to a joint vehicle. I think what is actually meant is that there will be a joint committee set up which will oversee the two councils' work in terms of shared transactional services, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much. I think that answers all the questions.
Thank you, councillor Dunn. Does council agree to receive the report? Can we now move on to councillor McGuinness's report, please?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is the second year I've had the pleasure of bringing my portfolio report to council. Last year, pretty fresh in the role, I stood here and talked about how proud I was of the great work going on across the council to support our communities and promote our city. This year, with more time in the role, I can say I'm even more proud and feel even more privileged to lead on this work. And I'd like to start by placing on record my sincere thanks to all of the officers and partners who pour their skills, effort, enthusiasm and creativity into this work day in, day out. It won't surprise council to hear they're planning to keep this pretty upbeat. As 2018 begins, we've got a lot to look forward to in Newcastle. We've got another magic weekend, another HSBC city ride, we've announced some great music acts on Spiller's Key, Ed Sheeran at St James's Park will be hosting a Raph 100 event, we've got great plans for Holocaust Memorial Week, Newcastle Pride, Chinese New Year, the Mella, there's just far too much to mention, but people will notice that as yet I've not mentioned the Great Exhibition of the North. But don't worry, I won't leave out the biggest event in the UK in 2018. I'm not going to pretend that it's all fun and games and a hundred percent positive. Our city is still blighted by central government funding cuts, and make no mistake, our residents are feeling it. Difficult choices have been made this year, as they have every other year since the prolonged process of austerity began in 2010. News of our local government settlement, or lack thereof, tells us 2018 will bring more of this. Perhaps the most reported on are notable cuts to our parks budget. Parks are a non-statutory service, but that doesn't mean that they aren't important to our city and important to our residents, they absolutely are, but it does mean that they can't be our priority for our spending. In Newcastle, because of central government cuts, we've lost ninety-three percent of our parks budget. This level of budget cut could have meant closing gates, it could have meant the degradation of parks, it could have meant that we were in a position where our parks would no longer be the green haven in our city that we appreciate so much, but this isn't acceptable to us in Newcastle. We've chosen to do things differently. With support from the National Trust, HLF, social finance, Newcastle Universities, and one of the biggest public consultations the city has ever conducted, we've developed a new delivery model for our parks, and this year we'll be working to establish the Newcastle Parks Charitable Trust. The aim of the charity is to protect our parks, to help them grow and thrive, to keep them in public ownership and to sustain them as spaces for wildlife and wellbeing in our great city. It's to deliver the green spaces that our residents have told us they want and need. We'll be the first city authority to do this, because in Newcastle we lead and we aren't frightened to make positive change despite our budget challenges. In 2018, we'll continue this theme of innovation around the delivery of services as we continue to work on hubs and take an in-depth look at our customer-facing services, our libraries and our digital offer. We need to make sure that they are there for people, but they're there for people in a way that residents need them to be for the future. I started by mentioning events, and it would be remiss of me not to take the opportunity to talk about the Great Exhibition of the North. This will be the biggest event in the UK in 2018. It's an opportunity to showcase our city and to invite people from all around the world to see it. We're expecting tens of thousands of visitors and millions to our economy. This time next year, in my portfolio report, I'm hoping to be looking back on what will be a fantastic year for Newcastle and the North, but I'll also be looking at how we create an exhibition legacy. There are many ways we can seek to achieve this, and I'm sure council would agree with me that the most important things to focus on are those that create a legacy for the benefit of our residents and our community in Newcastle, that inspire the children growing up here to learn and to work towards ensuring a future of this city remains bright and prosperous. However, it's also important to look at the physical legacy, and this is something that we've been discussing as we plan the Great Exhibition with our friends in Gateshead. Whether that be adding something new and shared across the river boundary, or looking at options for retaining the water feature in the time perhaps, and of course, there are some things that are coming to Newcastle for the exhibition that it would be really, really sad to say goodbye to in September. As part of the exhibition, Stevenson's Rocket is returning to Newcastle on loan from the Science Museum in London. The rocket was built here in eighteen twenty-nine on Fourth Street, in a time when the North really was a powerhouse. We led the world in terms of design, innovation and vision. Rocket went on to unite two other great northern cities in Manchester and Liverpool by rail at an average speed of thirteen miles an hour, and moved forward to the world of steam locomotion and the industrial revolution. You're right, it isn't much faster than transport. Wouldn't it be great if, as the North unites for this exhibition, to take control of our future, we looked at the possibility of retaining some more of their inspirational heritage in our region? What would be more inspiring to the children of the North East than to be able to see Rocket, a wonderful part of our history, permanently on display here in our home city? It just feels right to me and it just feels like a good time. So that's just a thought to end on, and I'm obviously happy to answer questions about the report, which I assume is read. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You're talking in your report about having a vision of Newcastle being a great place to live, work and play, and it's the play that I'm a bit concerned about. I mean, I have raised this before, but can I ask you when you're going to come forward with a plan for protecting play areas that are not part of the parks proposal? There are five in my ward, the only reason that they're going to get any money at all in the next year is because we have money from a 106 agreement, and even that's taken the council months and months to get, agree the funding, let alone actually going ahead and doing the work. These play areas are simply deteriorating rapidly and will fairly soon be completely unusable unless some funding is found. So can I ask what you're going to do about it?
Councillor Cot?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Thank you for your report, councillor McGuinness. You've made a lot of reference, both in your speech there and in your report, to austerity. Is austerity for you the driver of change in your portfolio area, or is it creativity and innovation which the council would wish to introduce? One of the things that you mention in the report is about community hubs, and I know that community hubs are being considered in the budget portfolio, the budget report at some stage, but I just went to whether you had a vision about what community hubs might look like, and in that, how are you going to deal with some of the professional differences between council staff in different sections of the council who may not wish their professional integrity to be changed by any arrangements, like joint working, a one that we had a few years ago to give you an example with customer service centres and library staff. There may be some other conflicts like that that you may come across, but I suppose it depends on your vision, and I'd be interested in what your vision is for community hubs. What are the community hubs? What are the community hubs? How do you see them developing over the course of the next few years? And yes, I think that was it. Thank you very much.
Councillor Ainslie. Sorry, you're just on the list. Councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just wonder if councillor McGinnis could give us an update on Elzig Pool and also on Fenempool. I think she's commissioned officers to do some work on Fenempool to make sure that it can be sustained because it was closed under previous Labour administration. I hope it can survive this one. And then also, could she give us an update on the Culture Investment Fund and whether any money other than the new crowdfunding arrangement has come in from any donors? Thank you very much.
Councillor Higgins.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to thank councillor McGinnis for her report, which, when you consider the challenges that we face and the questions that have come from the other side of the chamber, I think we've been remarkably successful in retaining our facilities when you compare our record with other neighbouring authorities, you know, in relation to our libraries, leisure facilities and our work towards sustaining our parks as well. But my comment actually, or my question, which was quite difficult to shape because I was forbidden from using the M-word by the cabinet member, so I can't go down my normal question route, but it relates to community relations because there is a mention in the report about our work towards enhancing community relations. And just briefly, Lord Mayor, with your forbearance in that context, I'd like to say how delighted I was to attend the book launch for Dr Harry Shuckler last week. Harry's been an absolute giant in the city in terms of community relations. It's been my privilege to know Harry for many years and I was delighted to go along there, so I thought I wanted to mention that this evening. We still face a number of challenges over community relations and we know that in the aftermath of Brexit, for example, we had a spike of race-related incidents and I was particularly disappointed, I've gone on record as saying this, that once again we allowed that rabble from the EDL to march through our city. But I'm delighted that we've had successful events such as the Freedom City Festival in relation to the visit by Martin Luther King many years ago and also we've got our Holocaust memorial events coming up in the very near future, which I hope that people will support. Councillor McGinnis has quite rightly drawn attention to this wonderful Great Exhibition of the North that's coming up and does she agree with me that it is vital now that we engage all sectors of the community in this event as a flagship for our diversity and multiculturalism? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Ashby.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. May I refer councillor McGinnis to page 10 of her report, which I'll quote for ease. The events team continue to work with a range of external partners such as Newcastle University, Newcastle Gateshead Initiative, et cetera. The focus remains on facilitating the safe delivery of a wide range of events across the city that serve to attract visitors to the city. Supporting this is our Great North City Fund, designed to ensure the council has the ability to back projects which bring something extra to our city, end quote. Can she remind us or correct me that the city is making grants of a million pounds over five years to the Newcastle Gateshead Initiative for the provision of New Year's Eve jollities? How pleased was she with the performance on the town moor? She cannot be unaware that the council's PR people sought good news on social media by way of endorsement, including photographs, only to be engulfed in feedback from a great number of unhappy local people. Is she aware that families were asked to report at least an hour before the event was due to start to stand in a muddy field in the dark and then be unable to see anything? Is she aware that plenty of families left in disgust and then expressed this on social media? It certainly brought something extra to the city's reputation. Among those who could see, I'm told children were frightened by what appeared to be the staging on fire. Was a risk assessment carried out? After all, muddy town moor and darkness are hardly unexpected on New Year's Eve. Has she asked for an urgent report from NGI? What has she been saying to them about spending the next tranche of the council taxpayers' money? Is she happy with the pre-publicity about which many local people complained? Complaints were also aimed at the rip-off prices being charged by vendors on the town moor. Does the council benefit from fees or profit shares from them? If we're going to fund festivities, would she not agree that all the people in Newcastle should get a chance to see them? So what are her plans for New Year's Eve this year?
That was more than one question. Councillor Avery.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think you may have meant to call me and not councillor Ainslie. So my question is about something else, but I'd just like to very quickly associate myself with councillor Higgins's remarks. I was unfortunate enough to have been one of the many people who suffered a hate crime after Brexit. It's a matter of tremendous concern. I don't know whether that constitutes a delectable interest, but it's a very serious concern which we really can't ever forget about. But my question relates to something else and I was happy to hear a lot about it. When I was six, I was lucky enough to go with my parents to the Gateshead Garden Festival as one of 3 million people to do so and that really inspired me as a child and while as an adult I'm much more aware of the deficiencies of that project, it really inspired me as a child and I may want to learn about horticulture and biology and lots of other stuff. But that's sometimes a privilege which is more enjoyed by children like the background I had growing up in Jesmond than necessarily children across the region and in some of the poorer parts of the city. So what more detail can councillor McGinnis give us on how children from all across the city will be involved and inspired by the Great Exhibition of the North? Thank you.
Councillor Haddad.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. A very quick question for the cabinet member. I wanted to ask if the people coming to the Great North Exhibition will have the Tyne Bridge painted because it's been looking rusty for an awful long time.
Thank you councillor Haddad. Councillor Cook.
On page 80 of your report, you make reference to the Backing Biker Initiative which brought 80 million pounds worth of investment into the city, which I guess puts into perspective something we were talking about earlier on, where we all regretted what meagre gruel would be offered, but I wonder if you'd like to make some comment about that.
Thank you councillor Cook. You'd be pleased to know that was the last question, so would you like to respond councillor McGinnis?
I keep pushing my yes button instead of my on button, sorry. Right, so councillor Taylor, a great place to live, work and play, playgrounds. Yes, so we are undertaking a review of playgrounds, which I think you're aware of. I agree, playgrounds are incredibly important and we have suffered as a result of budget cuts, central government budget cuts. They're very important for the health of children and we will be presenting a plan in due course. Councillor Cot, is austerity the driver for creativity and innovation? Or is it creativity and innovation? Well, yeah, creativity and innovation. We want to always approach all of our services with the future in mind and design services that are appropriate for residents for the future. But of course, everything that we do has to be in context of our budget and so we do have to make decisions in line with our budget difficulties. I think that answers your question. Councillor Faulkner, an update on Elzig Pool. So we've had really, really productive meetings with the Friends of Elzig Pool and we've decided as a way forward together that they should seek a partner to help them to operate. They've done an incredible job at getting some really, you know, some really strong funding, they've developed a business plan and we're committed to supporting them to get that pool up and running. As regards to Fenempool, you're right, there's a review underway that's currently with officers and when it's appropriate, we'll give a full report back to members and to interested parties on that. The Culture Investment Fund, I think, has attracted around 290,000 to businesses, sorry, to cultural organisations in the city as well as the crowdfunding, but I'm happy to get a bit more information to you on that. Councillor Higgins, you make an, the M-word, I'm going to give it to you. Councillor Higgins always likes to talk about the magic weekend because he's a massive rugby league fan. We're incredibly happy to have the magic weekend here again. I'm really, really proud to welcome it back to Newcastle. And I know you didn't ask the question because I know I said that you always ask the question, but there you go. And councillor Higgins has been instrumental in helping us with that relationship as well, so thank you very much to you. To answer your question on community relations and the events, I think actually our events programme is fundamental to improving community relations and community cohesion. Every event that we, certainly that we work on, has that at the centre of it. And you can see by the wide range of events that we host in the city, it's really paramount to what we're trying to achieve with not just the events programme but everything that we do. And working with councillor Kemp, who takes responsibility for community safety, we make sure that all of the planning around those events is top-notch and that is definitely the case with the Great Exhibition where senior police officers are sat with us on the board planning that event. Councillor Ashby. Oh yes, councillor Ashby, you asked about 20 questions about New Year's Eve. The New Year's Eve event is coordinated and operated by NGI. We review it every year, we'll review it this year and we'll be announcing plans for what we choose to do for New Year's Eve next year. Councillor Avery, I think you make a really, really good point about the Great Exhibition of the North and it's really good to hear that you went to an event and were inspired and actually, again, that's really fundamental what we're trying to do with the Great Exhibition and the discussions that we're having with NGI, with Gateshead and with all of the partners who are involved in running that event. We do have a quiet aim of trying to get, and you know, we're hoping to make this a really solid objective, we're trying to get every child in the city to that event in the five weeks that remain between the start of the event and the beginning of the school holidays. And then within the school holidays, there'll be a summer camp, which I believe will be in either Exhibition or Lees's Park, which is for all families to come together and learn about the event. As I said in kind of my opening, in my opening speech, the key thing is engaging all parts of the community. This is not a middle-class event for middle-class people, this is an event for absolutely everybody, not just in this city but around the country and around the world, to come and learn about the North, the past, the present and the future and hopefully be inspired by it. Councillor Haddad, will the Tyne Bridge be painted? I really don't know.
Can you ask?
I can ask, absolutely, I can ask. And councillor Cook, you bring up a really interesting thing about Backing Biker. Any initiative like this which brings investment, which works with partners to bring investment into our city is always a priority. So thank you for bringing that up and I'm happy to circulate more information about that initiative. Thank you.
Thank you councillor McGinnis. Does council agree to receive the report? Appointments, are the appointments agreed to set out? Thank you. Right, notice of motion. I call on councillor Faulkner to move the motion seconded by councillor Cot. Councillor Faulkner.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. You mentioned, Lord Mayor, at the beginning of the evening that this is the centenary of the extension of the franchise to women, some women, not all women, you're right. And in a way, you could kind of look at the sentiments of this motion as being part of that kind of evolution of the extension of the franchise as our attitudes and circumstances and education and everything else changes. And that's really what it's intended to reflect. The origin of the motion is this, that I attended, and there were, I think, two other councillors present, a Saturday morning event in November, which was part of UK Youth Parliament Week and there's a very interesting debate amongst members of our youth council who took on the roles of famous people in history and politics and debated issues. But after it, Abigail Charlton, who is a member of the youth council and the youth parliament, came to councillor Casey and I and said that this issue, Votes at 16, is something the youth parliament nationally have endorsed last year and this year and in raising it as an issue, a campaigning issue, they would find it quite helpful if Newcastle council might do what a number of local authorities around the country have done and that is to take and endorse a motion giving our support to Votes at 16. So that's the origin of the motion and I have been in conversation with, or email conversation anyway, with councillor Casey since then. I got to the point where we needed to put a motion forward, so I've done one and it has now been amended as a friendly motion and that's fine. Might have been better if we'd sorted that out beforehand, but it's okay now. So that's the context, that's why we're here and I felt it was a really easy one for council because both of the parties represented in this chamber, in their most recent manifestos and their recent history of supported Votes at 16 and the wording of the motion explains some of the rationale for that, of course. I just think, we think, I'm sure we all think, that it was a disgrace that young people, 16 to 17-year-olds, were not given a say in the EU referendum, unlike in the Scottish independence referendum where they were allowed to vote, because we had a classic case, didn't we, of young people being the ones who would have to live longest with the consequence of whatever that political decision was going to be, and we know what it was, longer than any other demographic and they should be given the option of having a say about it. We do know that Scotland's positive experience of including 16 and 17-year-olds in the 2014 independence referendum then led to the lowering of the voting age for local and for Holyrood elections. We know that 16 and 17-year-olds can vote in the Isle of Man, in Jersey, in Guernsey, in Brazil, in Austria, in some elections in Germany, in Malta and Norway. It's a movement, I think, that's gathering pace and it's a reflection, I think, of the increased political maturity of young people, the fact that they have access to many more sources of information, that they can read and learn about issues and make their own minds up about issues. And the arguments that you sometimes hear, and I do accept that there are probably people, individuals on both sides of the chamber who might have certain reservations and might be based around this argument about whether young people are mature enough, use that word, it's an M-word as well, mature enough to exercise the vote. Well, you know, I do think that they are, I think, and it's almost as if, you know, if you asked a question, well, if older people with dementia, there was some debate about them not being eligible to have a vote, we'd be outraged, wouldn't we, and quite rightly so. So I think this maturity argument really is a bit of a red herring. So I think we've got to the point where it would be helpful and I hope that members across the chamber will support this, will accept the view that perhaps unlike previous generations, young people are much more informed, they have more content in their school curriculum now, there's civil, political and social education, which has been introduced latterly. I think that has increased their interest in issues that will affect the wider community and themselves and their own demographic. So I hope that members will have been persuaded before they saw the motion, before they came into the chamber tonight, but we'd be interested in whatever points of view are registered and attempt to answer any questions, but I do hope you'll support the motion.
Councillor Cot.
So I'd like to second the motion and reserve the right to speak. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Right, we have an amendment, so I now call on councillor Casey to move the amendment, which will be seconded by councillor Postlethwaite. Councillor Casey.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm very glad that my colleague enjoyed the youth council event that he attended. I also enjoyed it and I hope to see him and more colleagues at any future such event. This issue was chosen as a campaign issue by the youth parliament in 2014, 2017 and again for 2018, so clearly there's very widespread support for this among young people and it's been chosen above other very important issues, so that reinforces the need for us to support it. There's nothing magic about the current voting age. The age only changed to 18 in 1970. My mother was 20, so she would have been 21 the following year, she was able to vote a year early. We've got used to the age being 18, but there's no reason not to lower it. It was just one of those things, I suppose, in America it was partly the draft age. The reduction in the age to 16 has been discussed since 1985 and has been raised in the House of Commons. Unfortunately, although... Unfortunately, although individuals in every party are supportive, the leadership within the Conservative Party seems dead-set against this for some reason, and it's been talked out of debate. And among other Conservative policies, it's concerning that there are proposals for ID requirements at polling stations, which ironically, in light of their resistance to Votes at 16, would make it more difficult for many older people to vote, and voting should be open to everyone, particularly given that voter fraud is very rare in this country. This would also fit in very well with our commitment to become a UNICEF child-friendly city, which it's my pleasure to challenge, to champion as a portfolio holder. Far from young people being disengaged or immature as a portfolio holder, and also as a member of the Labour Party, where you're able to join at 14, I've found young people very willing and able to engage on the many issues that matter to them, and very able to provide challenge and constructive suggestions. In fact, I believe in most cases they would raise the tone of the debate if they were more widely included. It would also be a shame if the devolved nations were allowed to outrun Westminster yet again. Scotland, as councillor Faulkner has said, has already lowered the voting age. Wales seems very seriously, you know, deep in thought about this and very likely to do it. Scotland has already banned corporal punishment of children, and Wales seems very likely to do that as well. I'm seeing a pattern here. It's a shame that Westminster can't get with the programme. And it's also interesting that several of the countries, as councillor Faulkner mentioned, that have lowered the voting age are not what we would typically think of as bastions of liberalism. This is not, this doesn't have to be a party political issue. It doesn't have to be a left-wing, right-wing issue. It should be just about doing the right thing for all of our citizens and engaging as many people in our democracy as possible. So on that note, I'm very glad that my colleagues across the floor can accept the amendment, and I look forward to the rest of the debate. Thank you.
Councillor Postlethwaite, your seconded.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. So I would like to second the amendment. This motion on Votes at 16 is an important one, and our Labour amendment recognises the campaign work that has already been done in this area by the Newcastle Youth Council. We make it clear in our amendment that we support the Newcastle Youth Council in this campaign and will work alongside them. It is right to draw attention to Labour MP Jim McMahon's Private Members Bill that would have brought voting rights to all citizens over the age of 16 in parliamentary and other elections, had it been approved since it was talked out by the Tories. Votes at 16 has wide support, it has the support of many parties, and was in the Labour Party manifesto at the last general election. 16, I know, I realise a lot of this has been said already, 16- and 17-year-olds in Scotland are already able to vote in Scottish elections and their local government elections, however not in their UK elections. It is the Tory MPs in the UK Parliament that are preventing Votes at 16 from becoming law, and it's these Tory MPs who need to answer to the UK Youth Parliament and 16- and 17-year-olds in this country about why they are denying them the right to vote. It is clear to me that the Tories are not interested in extending the rights of 16- and 17-year-olds. Indeed, there is considerable worry that many older voters may struggle to vote in this year's local elections in areas of the country where the Tories are trialling the use of voter ID at polling stations. Not all citizens have access to voter ID, and so the Tories appear to be pursuing an agenda of voter disenfranchisement when they could be championing the rights of 16- and 17-year-olds and acting in ways to improve turnout in elections. While the Private Members Bill was not successful this time, we will not give up in the fight for Votes at 16. We will help to build a movement around the young people fighting for their rights, and tonight we send out the message that Newcastle City Council supports Votes at 16.
Thank you councillor Postlethwaite. Was that your maiden speech in council? So well done. Right, I have councillor Lambert.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It's very, very gratifying that both the Liberal Democrats and the Labour Party have been fully committed to lowering the voting age to 16, and the arguments have been spelt out very eloquently and competently by colleagues from both sides of the chamber. It's very, very important, however, that if we are serious about sort of extending the franchise, that it's necessary to strengthen sort of citizenship education, which both parties are fully committed to. It's worth emphasising that way back in 1998, David Blunkett, who was then Education Secretary, made citizenship a compulsory integral part of the secondary school curriculum. And certainly, the numbers of entries for citizenship, both at GCSE and later at AS and A level, actually reached beyond 150,000. And it's quite depressing to read that the numbers of citizenship teachers are virtually being depleted. Citizenship entries for GCSE, citizenship in our secondary schools have basically, it's withering on the vine now. And the Conservative government unfortunately decided to scrap AS citizenship and A-level citizenship in sixth-form colleges and further education colleges. So it's absolutely pivotal if we're to give our young people a deep insight into the democratic process, to understand how the political system works, what political parties stand for, what the role of an elected representative is, an insight into our legal system and economic system. That is a strong, powerful case whilst lowering the age of 16 to allowing 16- to 17-year-olds to vote, as they do in many other European countries, a very powerful case to strengthen the case for citizenship education. Now, the government have been fairly sort of lukewarm about this, but I understand that the government have made a ministerial announcement, the back bench has been promoted, Chloe Smith, who seems to be quite sympathetic to these sorts of arguments. So it'd be nice if perhaps both sides of the house maybe threw a letter to the relevant government minister, maybe a joint press release, a letter to the Chronicle just to articulate both the arguments that have been re-emphasised about the need to lower votes for 16- and 17-year-olds with the clear need to strengthen and enhance and consolidate citizenship education, both in the secondary and further education post-16 area and curriculum. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you councillor Lambert. Councillor Avery.
I'm very happy to support my ward colleague councillor Casey and my good friend councillor Postlethwaite, but I'm also very happy to have seen this from councillor Falconer. It's actually as a result of an email I received from councillor Faulkner, that I was able to go and speak to children participating in the National Citizen Service, NCS scheme, which I was fortunate enough to do three times last year. And these were exactly the young people that would be enfranchised by Votes at 16. And they're not all the sort of the usual suspects that I was as a child from Jesmond at 16 with an educated family, children with a wide range of backgrounds, different ranges of educational opportunity. And it's talking to them that makes me certain that this is the right policy and the right outcome. And it's absolutely important, incredibly important, for the children in our city. But I also support this because I'm a supporter, particularly as a child of two statisticians, of evidence-based policy. We tried this in Scotland, every possible measure, it succeeded, and it succeeded beyond our wildest dreams. We ended up with the highest level of democratic participation in any UK democratic vote involving the people ever, and it was phenomenal, incredible. And indeed, I'm not aware of anyone, I was lucky enough to go and campaign in Scotland, I'm not aware of anyone who was involved face-to-face who does not now believe that votes should be extended to 16. Indeed, the leader of the Scottish Conservative Party has gone on record many times that this particular referendum changed her mind about how useful and important this policy would be. So again, I command councillor Faulkner's motion, and I actually would command the NCS and say that if any members are unsure about whether children should be, young people should be allowed to vote at 16, that they should go along and talk to themselves, because I think they'll have the same experience that I did.
Thank you councillor Avery. Councillor McCarthy.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I wasn't intending to speak, Lord Mayor, but I wanted to draw attention to the fact that we have two members of our Newcastle Youth Council here in the council chamber tonight. Dan and Abigail are here. It's at their request, I think, that this motion has been brought forward, so I think we're really delighted to welcome them to the council chamber to hear the debate tonight. Lord Mayor, I think this shows how we are trying to represent the needs of the whole of our community in the work that we take forward through this city council. Echo the comments of all colleagues across the council chamber, Votes at 16 and 17 are really important. In my professional life, I encouraged four- and five-year-olds to vote in their class elections. You know, I think elections are really important, democracy is really important, and it's part of why, you know, part of the reason why we are all here. This is part of that whole process, how we learn together to make that more effective. As Oscar and others have said, you know, we've seen examples of this elsewhere that we need to learn from. It's timely Conservatives nationally took note of what young people are telling us. Thank you very much.
Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to support this motion that councillor Faulkner's brought to us this evening. I would have supported it in its original form, and I do believe it's been improved better by the amendment. And for me, the key paragraph in it is one that was where originally, which said, people who can consent to medical treatment, work full-time, pay taxes, get married or enter a civil partnership and join the armed forces should have the right to vote. Lord Mayor, the 16- and 17-year-olds that I know, and I'm pleased to remark that I do know a large number of them, and that includes several of the people that councillor Avery referred to in the summer, they're perfectly capable of entering into this political debate and making the decision. And as I say, I'm quite pleased that we can all support this motion this evening. Thank you.
Councillor Cot, you reserve the right.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Yes, I really do believe that there will be Votes at 16, because I believe that two of the major political parties in this country believe in it, and I believe that the Conservatives will be dragged along kicking and screaming and will support it eventually. There've been a lot of points raised, all of which I agree with, and I think it's been a very interesting discussion. I know myself and personal experience that young people aged 16 and 17, and indeed even younger, can be very engaged with political issues. And it astonishes me sometimes when politicians say things like, oh, young people aren't mature enough, young people don't understand issues. They do understand issues, they understand issues that affect them. They may not always be wedded to political parties. Well, that's healthy, because it means that political parties have to do more to try and win their votes. I believe that people who are 16 and 17 would be a very useful party electorate, because they would help to keep us sane. Where parties often make pragmatic decisions on the basis of short-term issues, young people can often take a longer view, and I think that's really important. It helps us keep us sane, it helps us to ensure that we're making decisions for the right reasons, so I'm really keen on that to happen. And because young people are so engaged in all of these issues, giving them the right to vote will indeed help them to become more active citizens. I think many of us in our generation are not as active as we could be, and even people in this room could be more active, although we are elected politicians. Not everyone could be elected, of course, but I think there is a paucity of activity around citizenship generally. I was quite interested in what councillor Lambert was saying around GCSE, A-level, AS level and citizenship. I think this is an area which is really important. I would like to see a very active support from central government in relation to citizenship in schools, because I think this is the way of tackling some of the problems we have where people don't actually understand the political process. And I think it would mean that citizens would grow up, get into the adult world, much more informed about things that they are needing to know for their future. So there are many, many important things and important reasons why young people should have the right to vote. This is an enfranchisement which is long overdue, and I hope that it will take place soon. And I'm quite sure that Labour and Liberal Democrat politicians, both locally here and nationally, will be able to cooperate with each other. Maybe some of that pressure will work, particularly in a situation where we seem to have minority governments, and I suspect it's possible there may be another minority government after this one, who knows what the future holds. But this is an opportunity to really work together, it's not just Labour and Liberal Democrats or other parties in favour of this too. And we should take note of what young people want, how they want to be involved, what they want to see, and I think we've heard loud and clear from the Newcastle Youth Council and the UK Youth Parliament that this is a priority for them, and we should help them to deliver it, and we should do whatever we can in this chamber to help that be delivered. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Falconer, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just very briefly, thank you to colleagues for their contributions. Congratulations also from us to councillor Postlethwaite for this speech. Just to say to her that the original motion didn't include the Tory bashing bit, but I do agree entirely with what she said about how outrageous the filibustering was in Parliament of the Private Members Bill, it was a disgrace. For councillor Lambert, who he and I have exchanged emails several times on these subjects, including recently, I agree them entirely about the importance of citizenship education. He may know already that a combination of curriculum change in Scottish schools plus the experience of being involved in elections at age 16 and 17 has resulted in a fairly significant increase in the number of young Scottish people reading politics at university, and I think that's a damn good thing. Councillor Avery, thank you. Yes, it's a pity more members couldn't get not only involved with the youth council but in NCVS, they are a very inspiring group of people, they are hugely interested in doing work with you in your local communities as well as talking politics and finding out more about your role as councillors and our role as representatives of the city. So thoroughly a good organisation, and we should work more with them. And can I just say finally that there's a point that I didn't say originally, nobody's really mentioned, but I think Votes at 16 or 17 would really improve immeasurably the nature and direction of political debate in this country, because the interests of young people are not debated, they are not looked at. Think of the substantial increase in the number of unemployed young people, how difficult it is now for them to get on the housing ladder, issues of benefits, loss of disproportionately affected by council cuts with things like loss of leisure facilities. It really seems to me that this preoccupation, this sort of venal self-interest preoccupation of directing all policy initiatives and all goodies towards older people, it really has got to be challenged by the rest of us, because it has been to the significant disadvantage to the interests of young people in this country, and Votes at 16 or 17 will be one step in redressing the balance.
Thank you councillor Faulkner. We now need to vote on the amendment. Are we in agreement?
Yes.
So the amendment now becomes the main substantive motion, thank you. So do we agree the substantive motion as amended? Thank you very much. Okay. Right, next note of sub-motion, councillor Strathair to move the motion seconded by councillor Mendelson.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This motion is one of three tonight which all have a bearing on developing a healthy city where residents can live longer and have healthier lives. The issues highlighted on all three motions, preventing ill health, promoting good mental health and provision of health and social care services, are interrelated. In the short time that I have to speak to this motion, I will focus on the public health dimension, and councillor Mendelson, who as you know is vice chair of the Health Scrutiny Committee, will be speaking about healthcare and NHS concerns. My first point is to say that Newcastle City Council has the ambition to become a healthy city. We are on a journey and we are committed to get to our destination. Progress will be apparent when differentials in life expectancy and lives free from illness are reduced. We have a long way to go, and some determining factors are outside of our control, but I believe we're on the right track. Since the 1990s, the city council has continuous involvement with the WHO Healthy Cities European Network. Recently, we have contributed to a political vision statement which soon will be launched. At the heart of this is the role of local government, leading by example. We look forward to being part of the next phase of the WHO Healthy Cities Programme, and as we go forward, we will integrate our child-friendly city work, as we are already doing and working towards being an age-friendly city. This motion highlights our direction of travel and some achievements to date, and the challenges in the context of hostile government policies impacting on the poorest and most vulnerable of our residents, and also on the funding of public services. By supporting this motion, you'll be affirming the council's approach of developing health in all policies, which focuses on prevention and embeds actions across all policies and services. Increasingly, we are using the Wellbeing for Life Board as a mechanism for establishing shared priorities and cooperation across sectors. The motion identifies key dimensions of our Health in All Policies approach, and you will see it goes way beyond traditional health, public health services, although they do remain important. The transfer of duties to local governors spurred us to use our powers and resources across the board to promote prevention, to get better health outcomes through transport policies, parks and leisure services, housing and planning, health improvement policies through children's centres, through our working city activities, healthy schools... through children's centres, through our working city activities, healthy schools, anti-poverty initiatives such as financial inclusion and tackling food poverty. I could list many achievements since public health transferred to local government, but I can only mention a few. We have sustained a coherent and comprehensive public health programme in the face of national cuts to the public health budget of 3.9 million, that's 14% before inflation. Our public health programme achievements include the reconfiguration and recommissioning of services in drugs and alcohol, sexual health services, health visiting, school nursing, stop smoking services, and more. We're getting better services and better value for money. We have received national plaudits for collective work on drugs and alcohol. Working locally and regionally, we have helped to bring down smoking rates, and our Healthy Schools Programme is thriving in all parts of the city. The Better Health at Work scheme is booming, and infant mortality has fallen to a record low. We have seen continued fall in teenage pregnancies, and breastfeeding at six weeks a week is above the national average. In addition, our Health in All Policies approach is reaping benefits. We have established a Healthy Streets Board, so play streets are coming very soon. We have bike sharing schemes and partnership with British Cycling. There is ongoing work to tackle poor air quality, a major threat to health. Our transport policies increasingly have a health focus. Working with planning, we have policies limiting hot food takeaways near secondary schools, and we are effectively working with licensing and planning on alcohol issues, a major health challenge for our city. We are working through Newcastle County to bring about weight reduction, and we've helped to develop the Newcastle Food Plan and ensured that tackling food poverty is included in that plan. We are bringing about improvements in mental health, which Counselor Bowman, our excellent mental health champion, will speak about, and we have been shortlisted and awarded for a number of national awards. However, we note that the challenges are great, and not least, the last seven years of policies dictated by austerity, initially by the coalition government, which gave us so-called welfare reform, impacting on the poorest and most vulnerable, as well as reductions in funding for public services, only to be entrenched by successive Tory governments. It is not surprising, albeit shameful, that so many now are using food banks and that child poverty is increasing. We know that children born into poverty are likely to experience lifelong health and wellbeing consequences. Moreover, the NHS is in crisis, and we hope not in meltdown. Underfunding is a deliberate act of policy, and one can't help thinking there is a Tory plot to make it so bad that drastic measures of severe rationing, privatisation, or crony capitalism, as it's been called, and the introduction of charges on the government's agenda. Health experts say that the NHS is seriously underfunded, and that investment compares badly with our European neighbours. Some implications of this will be addressed by Counselor Mendelson. All I want to say now is that we should remember that it was Labour which gifted the NHS to the nation in 1948, and that it is Labour which continues to support and defend it, and it will be the return of a Labour government which will sustain it and make it fit for purpose. Locally, all we can do is scrutinise changes, oppose service reductions, propose a better way of achieving better health outcomes, and we're doing that through this motion. And we will call on the government to invest in the NHS, as well as adequately fund all the preventative services facilitated by local government. I ask council to support this motion, including the recommendations which I will return to when I respond to the debate. Great, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I now call on Counselor Mendelson to second.
Since becoming a ward councillor and as a member of Health Scrutiny Committee, and through my work alongside NHS care and voluntary sector staff in working towards a dementia-friendly community in Jesmond, I have been so impressed by the commitment, the expertise and innovation that exists across all areas of health and social care, not to speak of the groundbreaking research that's going on at our universities, one of the most notable being the Centre for Age and Vitality at Newcastle University, and the possibilities are exciting and endless. Counselor Strether has outlined what can be achieved through effective partnership working, which I know is going on across the city and through the Wellbeing for Life partnership, amongst other venues and organisations. But the reality we see through official reports, statistics and our own personal experience does paint a very different picture. Unacceptable waiting times for ambulances in A and E, crisis in mental health provision, which my Counselor Bowman will talk about, and a threat to much-needed community pharmacies, amongst other things. How can it be acceptable for a frail and confused older person with dementia to have to wait four hours for an ambulance, only then to wait 15 hours in a wheelchair in A and E to be seen? And how must it feel to be a member of staff who has to do their very, very best in the face of such under-resourced services? And this needn't be happening. As Counselor Strether has said, these functions and funding NHS are not an economic necessity, they are the results of political decisions made during the coalition and Tory governments since 2010. Figures about funding are bandied about, but what we do know is, and I've been looking at these all afternoon, and believe me, they're quite complex to work through, what we do know is that the rate of annual growth in the NHS has reduced significantly since 2010, for an average increase of 4% per year above inflation since the NHS was established, to just 1.2% in real terms between 2010 and 2020. And the Office of Budget Responsibility projects a need for a 4.3% annual growth. Health spending per head of the population will drop by 0.3% next year compared to this year. And comparisons with other OECD countries do show a drop in the spend per head compared to other European countries, which gets starker when we see comparisons around specific treatments and outcomes. The government has asked the NHS to cut spending by £22 billion by 2020, and in our region, the Sustainability and Transformation Plan for Durham, North Durham, Tyne and Wear and Northumberland has a funding gap of £641 million, which rises to £904 million if social care is included. So the opportunities and commitment to improve services are there, and transformation needn't be a dirty word if the funding is there to underpin these changes. Everyone agrees more funding is required for a more integrated approach, increased emphasis on prevention, and better provision in the community. But how can this happen when it means removing beds and hospital-based services before the community provision is there, and the real impact of prevention programmes on alcohol, drug abuse and obesity has not yet reduced the number of people who need treatment and hospital care? And occasionally, this is leading to a competitive rather than a collaborative approach among services. So our motion recognises the positive impact that can be achieved and what is happening under very difficult conditions. We call upon this government to adequately fund the NHS, a service free at the point of delivery guided by the real needs of our communities and residents, not by the market, which it sometimes is, and led and managed and overseen by a properly resourced, skilled public sector workforce, without room for private company profit. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mendelson. And I call on Counselor Taylor to move an amendment, and this will be seconded by Counselor Raymond. Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I hope this is viewed as a friendly amendment. I'd like to start by reading you an email I received at work yesterday. It said, 'Dear Wendy, we thought you'd like to know that following the cabinet reshuffle yesterday, Jeremy Hunt remains as Health Secretary and will also have explicit responsibility for social care. So with a stark winter facing us all, I think we can safely say no immediate change. Consequently, we thought it was a good moment for some stress management and resilience', especially after Theresa May's dismissal that the NHS is not in crisis after all, and 5,000-plus ambulances waiting for more than an hour outside A and E is because nothing's perfect. The email then went on to offer me, of course, on stress management and resilience for healthcare professionals. I was certainly tempted to accept. 'Colleagues, I've worked in the NHS for my entire working life, and I'm extremely proud of what the NHS achieves, a system that provides care to everyone without having to ask patients first what they can afford. But the NHS is under huge pressure, barely a day goes by without news of immediate problems, service reductions, missed targets, cancelled operations and non-urgent outpatient appointments, ambulances queuing at A and E, hospitals unable to admit new patients, and warnings of future failures. At present, Newcastle is coping better than many other areas of the country, but 2018 simply cannot be another year where these huge issues are ducked.' Last year, the President of the Royal College of Emergency Medicine said, 'The scale of the crisis affecting emergency care systems has reached new heights as we predicted, mainly due to a lack of investment in both social and acute healthcare beds, as well as emergency department staffing.' And this year, the situation is even worse. Just today, there was news that Churchill Hospital in Oxford is having to cut chemotherapy services, something obviously dear to my heart, due to staff shortages, and threatening the benefits to cancer patients. According to the government, the current problems are simply due to winter pressures and not their fault. They seem to forget that winter actually happens every year, and yet each year these pressures get worse. And shamefully for this government, our NHS is one of the lowest-funded health services compared with other European countries. As Counselor Strether makes clear in her motion, much of what is needed to improve health is related to the conditions in which our residents live, their housing, air quality, leisure services and prevention of ill health. But public health services are also under immense pressure, and pharmacies, which can help reduce pressure on the NHS by offering advice and support, are also being starved of funds. And while the government's supposed commitment to mental health is welcome, we will never achieve genuinely equal treatment for those with mental ill health as long as the whole system is under such financial pressure.' So Theresa May's response is not only to keep the failed Secretary of Health in his post, but also to name him as Secretary of State for Health and Social Care. So what does this new title actually mean? Unless the government is proposing a radical change to social care funding, it's just window dressing. The Health Minister is already responsible for social care, and for example, it was Libden Health Minister Norman Lamb who took the CARE Act through Parliament, introducing a cap on care costs that has since been abandoned by the Tories. And other Tory policies are contributing to the crisis. For example, ending bursaries for nursing last year led to a 23% drop in applications for courses in nursing and midwifery. Of course, it's easy to criticise the current hapless government, but what's really needed is a long-term solution to the crisis facing the NHS and social care. The public is sick and tired of the NHS and care system being treated like a political football, so surely it's time for politicians to work together to solve the problems. We should recognise the importance of confronting the challenge and accept that that transcends narrow party politics. A system designed to meet the needs of the population of the country in the 1940s is in need of renewal. The aim is to find a sustainable solution that will have genuine cross-party support for the future. Liberal Democrats believe we have to be honest with the public and admit that if we want to spend more on health, we need to increase taxes. And I point out in my amendment that a 1p increase in income tax, ring-fenced for health and social care, would raise an extra £40 million a year for Newcastle and Gateshead CCG, and would help fund some of the ambitious plans coming forward from the STP working groups. For example, the work on new approaches to preventing ill health being led by local GP Guy Pilkington. So let's call on the government to work with all political parties and health and care organisations to ensure we have a sustainable NHS that works for everyone, and to consider a ring-fenced increase in income tax as a first step. Please support the amendment.
Thank you, Counselor Taylor. Counselor Raymond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second the amendment, and as Counselor Taylor said, hopefully this is a friendly amendment to this already very good motion. As councillors are aware, and similar to Counselor Taylor, I'm employed by the NHS. And one thing I think we all acknowledge in this chamber is the dedication and professionalism of my colleagues in the service, both frontline and in support roles, as they tackle, as we speak, what is unprecedented demand for NHS services in England. I'd like to cover two issues, the financial side and the opportunities for joined-up working that devolution should offer if done in the right way. The motion describes a desire to move funding levels as a percentage of GDP to European levels, and I'm not going to get really techy here, I probably haven't got the time, but the latest figures for comparative spend date all the way back to 2015. Now, in the NHS, we get a month to do our accounts, so goodness knows if it happens in other countries if we go all the way back to 2015. But it shows on average that the EU 28 spent 9.9% of the GDP on health, whereas the UK was at 9.8%. So yes, there was a gap there, but not so well below. Sadly, I fear that Counselor Mendelson was right in her analysis, that the gap has grown since 2015, and we are now further behind. The levels of investment pledged by the Liberal Democrats at the last election, and to be fair, Labour as well, will move the UK closer to parity with the EU 28 by my very crude maths, with our promise funded by a 1% rise in income tax, which is transparent and ensures that the burden falls fairly across all income taxpayers, and, as was rightly said, gets £40 million into the health service in this area. That said, the NHS with comparatively best-in-class efficiency levels, and as I've said before, professional staff straining every sinew on behalf of patients, is still struggling to meet demand. And part of this has to come back to organisations across the piece currently not working in a joined-up way, and I think the motion reflects this. If done in the right way, devolution can be the catalyst for eliminating this kind of inefficient, silo-based approach and decision-making that sucks both money and effort away from the true health priorities of the city. The case of the GP practice closure that she cites, and I think I know which one, and I think if I didn't, Counselor Higgins would probably help me with it, it is the one in Scottswood. It's a prime example of a decision taken in isolation of other stakeholders and in isolation of public opinion as well, which clearly, you know, in time will need to be reversed at great cost once the large housing development plan for the area in question has been completed. It's untenable to think you won't need a GP perhaps in that area. So as well as the additional funding that we have a broad consensus upon in the chamber, decisions to allocate and move existing funds, thinking of the NHS as a £120 billion budget in England, need to be made with our clear health priorities in mind too. And far from being a threat, STPs actually offer an opportunity for joint working with potential devolution giving further impetus to this, to add to the democratic rigor of STPs that potentially isn't there at the moment. I therefore ask the leader of council really to ensure that this motion and potentially the amended one or the one that we end up voting on potentially is acted upon when the devolution arrangements are negotiated, and this once-in-a-generation chance that we have here to have efficient and integrated decision-making on health and social care matters is taken. Thank you, Lord Mayor, and I second the amended motion.
I have no indications. Oh, sorry. Oh, Counselor Hoddart, sorry. Did you wish to speak? No? Okay, that's fine then. If we call on Counselor Strether to respond.
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to thank Counselor Taylor for her very good speech there and her broad support for this motion, and the speech of Counselor Raymond in seconding the amendment. But unfortunately, I'm afraid I can't accept that amendment because of the specific proposal to increase tax by 1%. But I think there are many reasons why I take that position. It's not a magic bullet. The funding of the NHS is complex, and it's becoming even more complex now we've got social care in the mix. We all support, I think, funding from taxation, although I don't think we all necessarily support hypothecated taxes, which is mentioned in the amendment. It is not Labour Party policy to increase taxes across the board, certainly not on standard-rate taxpayers, many of whom are struggling to make ends meet at the present time. So if there is to be an increase in taxation, and it would be for a future Labour government, I think, to decide that, then I'm sure they would want those with the broadest backs to bear the greatest burden, and not ordinary people. I just remind the council that it was Nib Evan, who, if this might not be the appropriate term, but was the midwife of the NHS, and he said that socialism was the language of priorities. I think in the current situation that we're in, that we would be mindful to remember that, and the government should be giving greater priority to the NHS, and not just keep referring to looking for a magic money tree. I think many of us think there is money available, it depends who gets it, how it is distributed, and that I can't see any reason at the moment from departing from funding the NHS outside general taxation, and that it should be supported by, paid for by all of us. And not, as I thought suggested when I spoke, that it does seem that now we're getting suggestions that over and above taxation, patients should be charged for services, going to the doctor, there's talk about national insurance increasing, there are all sorts of proposals which depart from the founding principles of the NHS, that it is assured responsibility, and that we all should be paying for it, and it should be free at the point of use. And at this juncture, I don't see any reason from departing from that. So I'm sorry, I'm afraid I can't accept that amendment, but I do welcome the supportive spirit of the opposition, and I hope that you will all be able to vote for the motion. Thank you.
Can we now vote on the amendment, please? Have we got 10 people standing? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine? I think we've got 10 now. Okay, could we ring the bell, please? Can we now vote on the original motion, please? Is it agreed? Yeah? Okay, that's fine. If we now move on to the next motion, if I can call on councillor Talbot to move the motion, which will be seconded by councillor Holland. Councillor Talbot.
Thank you. Obviously Karen would normally move this motion, but she's poorly, so she sends her apologies. Newcastle Council provides good quality social care to its residents, some of whom are the most vulnerable in our city. And it's important to be clear that adult social care is not just about older people, it's about all people aged 18 plus who have social care needs. But we face an unprecedented challenge in being able to continue to provide this good quality care for a variety of reasons. Demographic pressures with increased numbers of people aged 65+, more complex needs of older people requiring more expensive care packages, increased costs, especially the sleeping minimum wage compliance scheme, CARE Act changes to safeguarding thresholds leading to a 19% increase in safeguarding referrals in 1718 with further increases anticipated, potential lack of market capacity with a poor public perception of care as a career, continued reductions in social care budgets and limited availability of national transformational resources, and the number of complex cases of children's care moving into the adult category. Many of these, most of these, are outside of our control. We manage the risk well, as identified by the comments from the Chair of Audit and from EY or external auditors. However, probably the most difficult challenge we face is the Tory government and its complete disregard for this issue. It has no coherent long-term policy or understanding of the scale of the problem. The government seems to see adult social care as simply a means to an end, that of getting people who may need additional care and support at home, out of hospital faster. While our re-ablement and other support services are extremely effective and hugely valued, we must not lose sight of the fact that adult social care includes many other services, including those for adults with learning difficulties, specialist housing provision, mental health services, adult safeguarding and support for the thousands of carers in our city. That social care has been transferred to the Secretary of State for Health, Jeremy Hunt, is not a cause for celebration. There was no funding of social care in the government's autumn budget, despite repeated warnings from organisations such as the LGA that adult social care alone faces an annual funding gap, £2.3 billion by the end of the decade. Short-term fixes such as the improved Better Care Fund, which don't come close to mitigating the funding we've already lost due to government cuts, or the council tax precept, which is welcome but penalises low council tax base areas like Newcastle, as we have already discussed tonight in the earlier report on council tax and business rates. Adult social care should be a right, not a postcode lottery. This is a national, not a local, problem. This needs a national funding, not a local funding solution. This is because what we do, we do very well at the local area and we understand our needs better than central government, but we need the finances to continue to be able to do it. If I can sum up by quoting ADAS, the Director of Social Services, 'The whole sector, including senior leaders from local government, the NHS and the independent sector are united in recognising the importance of an adequately funded social care system in promoting the country's wellbeing and ensuring that the right care is available. We are at the tipping point where social care is in real jeopardy and this impacts on the millions of people across the country who need care and support. The government must act swiftly, decisively and fairly and provide sufficient and sustainable funds to ensure that all people of social care needs and depend on our social care services can live a happy, healthy, dignified and independent life and not be fearful of what life has in store for them.' I know time is short, so I'll finish it here. I'll come back to talk about the amendment. Karen has passed on the comment that if there are any comments or information that colleagues would like from this discussion, she's happy to respond by email. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd just like to second the... Oh, here we go. Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to second the motion and I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate all of our very dedicated staff on their commitment to delivering such a high quality and very innovative service as they do in our city. They do an amazing job despite all the huge reductions in funding from government. Like most people here, I was utterly astonished at Theresa May's decision in light of the huge crisis we're facing today in the NHS, that she's added social care to Jeremy Hunt's portfolio. I can only hope that one of his first tasks is reviewing the social care funding and he deals with the crisis in care on a national scale. It's really, it is wrong to ship the cost to local authorities because our residents deserve a fair and equitable service and our staff definitely deserve the means to provide it. Thank you.
I now call on councillor Taylor to move the amendment, which will be seconded by councillor Falconer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. For over 20 years, successive governments have failed to introduce a sustainable system of funding for social care. The issue of paying for social care has been considered in depth on a number of occasions by the Royal Commission in 1999, the Independent King's Fund in 2005, which the government subsequently acknowledged, and the Dillnot Commission in 2011. And some important changes have been made, but the key features of the mean test remain broadly unchanged since 1997, while the issue of very high lifetime social care bills remains unresolved. In 1997, the Labour Party made a manifesto commitment to establish a Royal Commission on Long-Term Care for the Elderly. The commission was established later that year and reported in March 99 and recommended free personal care following assessment of needs funded by general taxation. That was rejected by the Labour Government. There's a recommendation of a more generous mean test of £60,000 in 1999 prices in respect of people funding their care relating to living costs and housing, but again, that wasn't implemented by the Labour Government. And the idea of a four-year cap on paying social care charges was also not taken forward. In 2006, the Wanndis Report commissioned by the Independent King's Fund proposed a move to partnership funding for social care, but the Labour Government decided to postpone any changes until 2014 or 2015 and no decision on funding this was actually ever made. So we then move on to the Dillnot Commission, established by the coalition government in July 2010. This was to consider a partnership model between individuals and the state and how people could choose to protect their assets, especially their homes, against the cost of care. In July 2011, the commission published its report and the recommendations included a £35,000 lifetime cap for paying for social care for the over 65s, a more generous means test. And over the next three years, the government did develop response. It wasn't quite as generous, but it did include a £72,000 lifetime cap on social care bills for all adults over 25 and a more generous means test and universal deferred payment arrangements. And these reforms were to be introduced in April 2016. The report also suggested a new national level of care and support needs to make care and support more consistent across the country and Liberal Democrats strongly supported these proposals and thought we were moving forward. In July 2015, the new Conservative government announced the postponement of the introduction of the reforms, including the cap and more generous mean tests until 2020. And then, of course, in 2017, we had the Tories' infamous dementia tax, one of the reasons they did so badly in the election. So 20 years on, there's still a crisis for social care, which we believe can only be solved by cross-party agreement, which is why the Liberal Democrats have been calling for the establishment of a cross-party health and social care convention, bringing together stakeholders from all political parties, patients groups, the public and professionals from within the health and social care system, to carry out a comprehensive review of the longer-term sustainability of the health and social care finances and workforce and the practicalities of greater integration and to ensure that social care is sustainably funded in the long term. This convention is not only supported by former Lib Dem Health Minister Norman Lamb, but also by Conservative former Health Minister Dan Poulter, Labour former Shadow Care Minister Liz Kendall, Sarah Wallaston, Meg Hillier, Clive Betts, Frank Fields and former Health Secretaries Stephen Dorrell and Alan Milburn. So it's already very much cross-party. And in addition, over 70 health and care organisations, including medical royal colleges, charities and trade unions, are supporting the campaign. So now really is the time for the government to start a national conversation involving the public, patients, civic society, healthcare professionals, carers and other experts. And there's a real urgency about this. The time to act is now and we need a process completed within a clearly defined timescale. We can't afford another 20 years with no solution, so please support the amendment.
I now call on councillor Falconer to second the motion.
Second formally and reserve the right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the guillotine's now fallen, so we'll go straight to the vote? Right, there's nobody reserved the right to speak. Oh, yeah, sorry councillor Falconer, you reserve the right to speak.
Don't get away with it that easily, do you, Lord Mayor?
Good try.
Well, look, just being very brief, I was of the view that what was a very good motion that councillor Coogar had compiled and was presented by councillor Talbot sort of petered off at the end, because we've had motions like this and there's a large degree of unanimity across the chamber. We know that the social care precept is, I think the leaders used the phrase a fig leaf, I mean, the national living wage put costs of over half a billion pounds onto care providers, which is far less than the public arm has got from the social care precept. So we know there are huge funding issues and we know also that adult social care, as councillor Talbot said, is not just about older people. The points that councillor Taylor was making were largely about how we funded the increasing element of personal care needs because the biggest cost burden lies there. And it is something that all parties have shared and I think it would be really big of you if instead of just turning the spotlight on the coalition and the Conservatives, and there certainly were failures and have been and continue to be failures, that you actually accepted that you had many chances during 13 years in government to reform the funding of social care and you didn't do it. Because like all of us, we've got involved in this rush to the bottom when it comes to personal taxation and corporate taxation. And you get what you pay for. And frankly, governments in this country haven't been prepared to invest. I think councillor Talbot or somebody said in this debate or the previous one, it's a reflection of your priorities, and so it is. And I think we all must have to face up to that. So I think the conclusion that's in councillor Taylor's amendment, to bring together in a powerful movement, a real groundswell of opinion right across the parties and across all sorts of professional and charitable and voluntary instincts, is much better than the current recommendation, which is to call on and write a letter. So I would urge you to accept the amendment.
Thank you. Councillor Talbot, you have the right to respond.
Okay. Thank you very much for the amendment. I actually agree with councillor Taylor that this is an urgent issue, which is why I can't accept the amendment. I'm sorry. I think what you're suggesting would just turn out to be another talking shop. We've had a range of reviews and commissions in adult social care and then over the past years, you mentioned them yourself, and I don't see that a cross-party convention would make anything happen other than what is happening now. We need the government to listen to what we're saying and get on with it. So I reject the amendment and I urge colleagues to vote for the original motion. There is a green paper coming out in the summer, allegedly. The government has already delayed this by six months. We cannot trust the government. By having some kind of convention, all we're doing is giving them much more time to ignore this issue. We must get them to realise this is urgent and they need to take urgent action now. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now vote on the amendment. Named vote. Have we got 10? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10? Yeah. Can we ring the bell, please? Thank you. Can we now vote? Do we need to vote on the original motion? Agreed? We agree, the original motion? Thank you very much. I now need to ask councillor Bowman if he wishes to go without debate on his notice of motion or hold it over to the next meeting.
Deal with it this evening.
Deal with it this evening, okay. Would you like to move the motion, councillor Bowman?
Yes, sorry, formally move the motion, yes.
And can we have the motion seconded?
Second formally.
Thank you very much. Can we now go to the... Oh, is it agreed? Agreed. Okay, thank you very much. We got through that quite nicely. And before I go, can I just remind everybody that the next meeting of council is on Wednesday 7th of February and look...